Good evening, it's April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I'd like to call to order the April ninth meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Thank you. Dixon, if you'll please call to roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Nagelski-Eichner.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here. Yeah, he's here.
Okay.
Ms. McMur.
Here.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
We have fifteen.
We have a forum. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Ms. Murray.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mayor. On page, on the acceptance of the minutes, the corrections are actually incorrect. The one that says page four comments attributed to Ms. Nagelski-Eichner were made by Ms. McMur. That's today, Ms. Murray, M U R R E Y. On page eleven, comments attributed to Ms. McMur were made by Ms. Nagelski-Eichner. That was actually made by me, Ms. Murray. And there was also corrections to where it notated who read. It says, Ms. Young announced evening consent calendar when Ms. Murray moved it. That was actually, I believe that was moved by Ms. Young last week. And then Heather read the consent calendar, but it said that I did.
You're not imitating people's voices, are you?
Popular last week.
Any further corrections, deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as corrected? Opposed? Abstentions. Ms. McMur is abstaining. Motion carries. Next is public participation.
Mr. Robert Cavello.
Good evening, Mayor, common council. My name is Robert Cavello. I'm the project manager for Lockwood Matthews Mansion Museum. I'm here on behalf of Patsy Prussia, who unfortunately could not make it tonight and I believe is listening in, but is not able to connect with us to speak on her behalf. So, here, yeah, for Patsy and to talk a little bit about Lockwood Matthews Mansion and the importance of the project and the looking forward to moving forward to completing the project. I thought I'd just give you just a brief background, because you all probably know this started back in two thousand and eight. That's over sixteen years ago, when the mansion came to the city and also working directly close with the Department of Economic Development and DECD and the State, uh, Chipo, Historic Preservation Group, to develop a plans that would take the building into the future, allowing us the life and safety features that is needed, better accessibility, heat all year round, tempered conditions to allow people to come into the building, visit the building, use the building, study in the building. All of these are not available to the public because of its present condition. The city and the state all moved forward with DECD granting us funds for the project of eight million dollars. And the city was going to present the remainder of that dollars. It was always anticipated this project would be close to twenty million dollars. We're not there, but we are approaching seventeen, eighteen million dollars. So, we are working our way through to completing this project with that type of funding in mind as it was envisioned over sixteen years ago. If you recall too, the project was broken into many of those budgets, uh, projects. And we brought power to the park many years ago. We brought power to the building. So, these are the steps we did in small increments during the city's budgets and to pay this as we, over this time period. We created new ADA bathrooms and ADA elevators to make it more accessible. I was a project manager at that time of that project. We created a ADA ramp into the building from the main entranceway and also a new stairwell down to the basement for future development and meeting rooms and meeting spaces. The big portion of the project was mechanical electrical upgrades of the project in which we are currently doing now. And this is the fire safety. This is what really completes the project and makes it much more usable.
There are three minutes.
I'm sorry. So, just to bring us really up to speed, I just wanted you to understand that Chipo and our team are working hard to get this project completed. We started this project a year ago. We have, we're about fifty percent done with construction. And we're, you know, pushing forward to completing, you know, in another, about end of this year, early January is our goal. And then we're moving into the, into the project. So, it's a very important project. We are fortunate to have Chipo and DECD at the project this week. They were.
There are three minutes and thirty seconds.
I'm sorry. They're related and we're happy to see the project moving the way it is. So, if I have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lisa Britton.
I want to look at all of you guys, because I can see with my glasses on. You'll have to take them off in order to be able to read my notes. So, the problems of being sixty-five. Lisa Britton, nineteen Shorefront Park. I'm not here to tell you how to vote on the capital of the operating budgets. I'm here to express my deepest wishes that you guys vote your conscience when it comes to how and where we spend taxpayer money. I have two grown sons living and working in New York City. One can squeeze a dime out of a nickel, the other can't get a nickel out of a dime. Which son's spending habits reflect Norwalks? We have amazing people at City Hall. I'll shout out two of them, and they don't know this. Lisa Baglarelli in tax collection and Ken Hughes in Parks and Rec. They do amazing things in their departments with very limited budgets. One is very visible, our Parks and Recs, and the other one, without Lisa collecting money, we'd have. But in various discussions this last month, I've heard overlap and sometimes misguided city priorities. Do economic and community development special events or the Yankee Doodle Garage equate to fixing a firehouse? New middle school lockers are nice, but do we need them when every kid has a Chromebook? I confess, it's frustrating to see Seaview Avenue intersection torn up after transportation mobility just painted the road or city streets torn up right after they've been paved. Years ago, the mayor reorganized the various city departments, and many of us thought it added another layer of management, but we were told it was going to make the city run better. All but the Board of Ed supposedly come through the Chief of Staff's office, but where's the coordination? It's no secret, I long argued, we needed a professional city manager that reports to you, the common council, not a chief of staff that reports solely to the mayor, but I digress. The bottom line is, we're in jeopardy of losing our triple-A bond right as we bump up against our credit limit. Other than the Board of Ed, debt services climb more than any other line item. And Mr. Dashowitz warned us of this, as we were approaching our limit with our choice to move forward with Norwalk High. Over Easter weekend, more than a thousand residents signed a petition asking the BET for a flat budget. Residents are scared. I don't know if the four-year phase of the revow is good or bad. On one hand, it gives residents time to adjust to the new financial reality or move. On the other hand, it sets us up for four years of constant pain as we get five to six percent increases tacked on even before the department had set their budgets. Please, instead of voting as a party, or because you got a phone call from somebody in the mayor's office, vote as an independent-thinking council member tasked with representing your neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nobody else? Anybody else in the audience wish to address the council? Is there anybody online, Mr. Manzi?
Yes, we have Diane LaRocella. Diane, if you unmute.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President Young and the common council. My name is Diane LaRocella at twenty-one Little Fox Lane. I know a few things here. Many of the people, your constituents, seniors, your voters are still suffering, trying to catch up from the pandemic and afford to be able to live here, trying to make ends meet. I think that some of, some of you, when I saw the capital budget, I think that we are losing our way. Just as things are getting better, but we are forgetting those that brung you to the dance. I know there are many wonderful initiatives that this administration has done, the charter, redoing the zoning regs. A lot of, a lot of good intentions in addition. But I also know that it's time to still cut the mayor's too generous recommended budget. You, the council, have the power to do that. The instructions that Mr. Goldstein gave the council on last Thursday were incomplete. You can actually just clean cut or reduce some of the items. I wanted to just put forth a few items that I think still need some cutting. And I am hoping you will send this back to the Board of Estimate. You have not had time to do your due diligence, and you need more time. You have till the fifteenth. So, let's, let's extend that, at least table this and have a special meeting. Under the ECD, I wanted to say that in the capital budget, under ECD, you have many, again, many terrific staff that are, have been creative, but they went overboard. There was a signal that, for instance, with TMP, who has done a lot of great work, they have so many, there's so much of a list of what they want as opposed to what is needed. I say, cut that budget by at least a third, if not in half, and tell them or suggest that we have to wait, just like we do in our home budgets for years to come, not this year. Lockwood Matthews Mansion Repair, I'm a former board member, just cut their budget by two to two point five million. That saves five hundred thousand dollars that you can put and transfer some of it over to operating budget for the well-needed enforcement staff that we need for quality of life, for arts commission. Again, I used to help run the Sono Arts Celebration, but they don't need a hundred fifty thousand for seed money. They should be looking, I say, give them fifty thousand and encourage them, and I'll help them get donations from our wonderful businesses. And lastly, special events. Two hundred and fifty thousand, that's a quarter million dollars. I say, that must be cut at least in half, no more than a hundred thousand, if not less. Under the Board of Ed and NPS, oh, I'm sorry, Recreation and Parks with Taylor Farm for a hundred sixty-five thousand, I think that that needs to be cut or put off till another year. The Broad River Complex, a lot of people.
There are three minutes.
Okay, I'll wrap up. Thank you. Broad River Complex, cut the one million. There's already at least four to five million being stowed in a, in a, in a pot. And we don't want artificial turf fields. And lastly, the Board of Ed, they have not been transparent enough, and they have been doing some wasteful spending. And I ask all of you, please, as Ms. Britton said, vote your conscience. You have more power than you are being led to believe. Thank you for your time, and please listen to our pleas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Manzi?
Anna Tabaknik. Please unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. This is Anna Tabashnik for Gilbert Street. Disclosure, I'm on the planning and zoning commission, but I'm speaking, sharing my own opinions. I'm sorry, I don't have something clearly prepared. I just wanted to say that I've been watching, I think, nearly all of the meetings, all of the BET meetings. Saw what PNV did, looking at the capital budget, saw the discussions of the operating budget, and I feel strongly that there should not be any more cuts that the mayor and the departments already went through and made a tremendous amount of cuts. And then I watched the BET cut further and further and further, as is their role. That the revow and the shift commercial is unfortunate, was expected, but also those of us whose taxes are going up the most also have seen our property values go up the most. I think that the four-year fathing is a no-brainer. Please do that. And looking at the different options, truly, the marginal difference between the different ideas of cut this and cut that, it's two hundred dollars a year. It's four hundred dollars a year versus losing positions, positions that we desperately need, like a neighborhood improvement manager, like zoning enforcement officers, like new police, they were talking about holding off on new hires, the fire department needs the truck. All of these places, everything that they've been asking for, you say, hold on a little bit longer. They've been holding on, and I think it's not worth really reducing the level of service that the city offers that makes it such a wonderful place to live, to make a point. A lot of folks asking to keep a flat budget have also said, defund the, defund NPS, defund the Board of Ed. All of this. We have wonderful schools. They're wonderful because we invest in them, and we need to keep investing in them. So, just a thought from, from a slightly different side. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now. There's no one else.
Hey, thank you very much. That ends public participation. There are no resignations and appointments this evening. Under Mayor's remarks, I want to give a huge, huge shout out to the Yukon Huskies men's team and to the, and to the women's team. And to the women's team, you know, both teams, the men lost three of their stars from last year and still were not expected to go as far as they did, but they have played the last twelve NCAA tournament games and won by double digits in every game. So, that's remarkable. The women had another year of injuries, but they still made it to the final four. They played remarkably well. And with the new recruits they're getting in, we think that next year will be their years as well. So, congratulations to the, to the game. Anybody's interested, I mean, to the teams. Saturday at eleven AM, there's going to be a victory parade in Hartford. So, anybody's welcome. So, it starts over by the Capitol. So, now there's also, yesterday, a lot of you attended the South Norwalk, South Norwalk School groundbreaking. Really, really an exciting day. We had a lot of people there that were very, very happy with that, with the progress of the program. We broke ground, we threw the shovels, and thanks to Senator Bob Duff again for the sixty percent reimbursement. With the sixty percent reimbursement rate guaranteed to the city of Norwalk for the next twenty-five years, we can do some remarkable things as far as building schools and making sure that our young children have air conditioning, have the latest state-of-the-art equipment to help them learn the technology that's available. So, we're really, really excited about that. We had leaders from the state and Norwalk Public Schools, members of the council. We had Lieutenant Governor Bysowicz, who is a very good friend of Norwalk there as well. And the week before last, or I'm sorry, the week before, last week, we did the groundbreaking at the new Norwalk High School. Another example of wonderful progress. And with the Norwalk High School, thanks to Senator Duff, we're getting an eighty percent reimbursement rate. That's going to save the taxpayers of the city of Norwalk. If we tried to do it without that eighty percent reimbursement rate, it would cost the taxpayers over two hundred million dollars. And I think our participation, our part's going to be somewhere around forty, forty-nine million. I'm not sure exactly. Last but not least, we have Earth Day coming up on April twenty-seventh, from twelve to four, rain or shine. It's going to be a family-friendly event, free, featuring live music, food trucks, tree planting, yoga, kids' activities, guest speakers, various vendors, and more. So, we invite everybody to come on out and celebrate Mother Earth. Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have six Corporation Council. One, authorization to settle claim Garcia Skindlin et al., city of Norwalk, docket numbered noted. That is on consent. Item number two, yes, I think Ms. Dunn. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong person. Ms. McMur needs to recuse herself. Thank you. So, this claim was off consent, but I think we just had to do that to let.
Yes, it's on consent or off?
It's off consent, so that Ms.
Okay, so let's record show that Ms. McMur has left the council chambers.
Absolutely. So, authorization to settle claim, color Rossi, Stephen A. versus city of Norwalk, et al., docket number noted. All in favor? I think, I'm not sure if we really need to speak about that. I think we were all in agreement. All in favor? So, we move that. So, next we have.
She's coming. She's coming.
Modern technology.
I love it. So, reading the council agenda tonight is Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor President. The common council committees, public safety and general government. Item one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents, agreements, instruments, and amendments necessary for Everbridge for use of their master notification pro software residence for three years, possible year one, thirty-one thousand fifty-three dollars. Possible year two and three, twenty-five thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. The contract numbers as noted. Public Works Committee. Item one, authorize mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute the master municipal agreement for construction projects required for municipal projects for constructing improvement to roadways, structures, and transportation, facilities that are eligible for government, financial assistance from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, the federal government, or both, together with such project authorization letters and other instruments necessary to implement the funding and undertake such construction projects under the master agreement. Item two, authorize the mayor Harry D. Rilling to execute an amendment to the agreement with Wind Waste Innovators Holding, formerly City Carding Incorporated, a citywide municipal solid waste collection dated September twenty-eighth, twenty-twelve. He exercises options to extend the term of agreement through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, based on the terms and schedules set out in the attached proposal dated December one, twenty-twenty-two. The fee for July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, the fee will be two million, two hundred twenty thousand dollars and seven hundred, seven hundred fifty dollars. Account noted. Authorize mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a fifth amendment to the agreement with Wind Waste Innovators Holding, formerly City Carding Incorporated, for curifide recycling collections, dated June thirtieth, twenty-four, twenty-oh-four. He exercises options to extend the term for agreement through June, twenty-twenty-five, based on the terms and fees scheduled set out in the attached proposal dated December one, twenty-twenty-two. The fee for July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five will be one million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, four hundred eighty dollars, and additional commodity processing fee of seven hundred fifty thousand will be added to each annual base fee. And is subject to available incentive based on the commodity revenue share, eighty percent city, Norwalk, twenty percent Wind Waste. Account noted. Item number four, authorize mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute Fifth Amendment to the service agreement with Wind Waste Innovations Holding, formerly Carding, City Carding Incorporated, for transfer station operation, transport and disposal service for municipal solid waste dated August four, twenty-oh-eight. He exercises options to extend the term of the agreement through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, based on the terms and fees scheduled set out in the attached proposal dated December first, twenty-twenty-two. Transfer station operation fee for July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five will be nine hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars and transfer and disposal fee of one hundred and one point eight five per ton. Account noted. Item five, authorize mayor Harry D. Rilling to execute an access license agreement in favor of every source for use of a portion of Madison Street Park needed for the purpose of replacing its deteriorating optical ground wire of ten twenty-eight line OPGW replacement project. Item six, authorize mayor Harry D. Rilling to execute the First Amendment to the February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one agreement for the transportation and disposal of yard waste material between the city of Norwalk and Wind Waste Innovations Holdings, formerly City Carding, an amount not to exceed two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Account noted. Item seven, authorize the mayor Harry D. Rilling to execute the First Amendment to the March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one agreement for the transportation and disposal of street sweeping, catch basin grit, and broken structural concrete between the city of Norwalk and DW Transport and Leasing Incorporated, with an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Account noted. Economic and Community Development Committee. Authorize mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement by and between the city of Norwalk, Indigo River Consulting LLC, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for the scope of services to conduct the Norwalk Strategic Harbor Plan. Account noted. Item D, Land Use and Building Management Committee. Item one, authorize the person to agent to increase the purchase order with special testing laboratories, Inc. for materials testing and field inspection service for the new Cranberry Elementary School project for a total not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Funds are available. Account noted. Item two A, resolve that the Norwalk Land Use and Building Management Committee of the Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the school building committee with regard to the Fox Run Elementary School floor removal and replacement project. Item two B, resolve that the Norwalk Common Council hereby authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings, cost estimates, and online specification for the Fox Run Elementary School floor removal and replacement project. Item two C, presume that the city, resolve that the city of Norwalk Common Council authorize the city of Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the Fox Run Elementary School floor removal and replacement project. Item three A, resolve that the Norwalk Land Use and Building Management Committee of the Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as a school building committee with regard to the Brookside Elementary School underground storage tank removal project. Item three B, resolve that the Norwalk Common Council is hereby authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings, cost estimates, and outline specifications for the Brookside Elementary School underground storage tank removal project. Item three C, resolve that the city of Norwalk Common Council authorizes the city of Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the Brookside Elementary School underground storage tank removal project. Item four A, resolve that the Norwalk Land and Building Management Committee of the Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the school building committee with regard to the Trace Elementary School underground storage tank removal and boiler igniter replacement project. Item four B, resolve that the Norwalk Common Council hereby authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings, cost estimate and outline specifications for the Trace Elementary School Underground Storage Tank Removal and Boiling Igniter Replacement Project. Item four C. Resolve that the City of Norwalk Common Council authorizes the City of Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the Trace Elementary School Underground Storage Tank Removal and Boiler Igniter Replacement Project. Item five. Authorize to increase the contingency allowance for architectural services with Tecton Architects for the South Norwalk Elementary School project for an additional amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Funds are available in the account noted. Uh, item six. Authorize Mayor Harry D. Rilling to execute a lease agreement with Hebrew Beth Israel Society, Inc. Doing business at Beth Israel Shabbat of Westport slash Norwalk on King Street for the city's use of twenty parking spaces related to the Norwalk High School project. The lease payment shall be forty dollars per space per month. The start date to be established at the time of agreement execution to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Remaining terms of the agreement shall be per Allen Lowe's memo dated March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, account noted. Item seven. Authorization. The City of Norwalk is hereby reauthorized to purchase, acquire, take and or eminent domain the properties listed below. And further, that the mayor Harry D. Rilling is designated, is authorized to execute and deliver any and all agreements, documents and other instruments necessary to purchase, acquire and or take such properties, account noted. Sub item one, sixteen Metta Street Extension, uh, Norwalk, Connecticut to provide for enhanced vehicular and student access. Additional parking and recreation, recreational and open space area for the South Norwalk School. Sub item two. A portion of real property identified as portion of parcel A to be deeded to the City of Norwalk area. Noted. And portion of lots eight and nine to be deeded to the City of Norwalk area noted. On and as shown in a certain map entitled Boundary Survey. Parcel A and lots eight and nine. Scale one forty thirty dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Prepared by Langen, Connecticut Incorporated. Online, on file in Building Management Department of the City of Norwalk to provide for the right-of-way improvements, including removing existing, existing sightline construction. See by the modification of travel lane and reconfiguration of the intersection as the South Main Street slash Metta Street slash Wilson Avenue slash Metta Street Extension and other right-of-way properties.
Well, John.
Well done. Fewer time.
Uncorrectly, uh, consent calendar as written. All in favor? Posed, extension, is that unanimous? Can we look online?
Yeah, Dwan raises his hand.
Please, there's consent down.
Thank you very much. So that I believe brings us to item seven, C two, am I right? Is that Mr. Goldstein? Seven, I'm sorry?
Eight two.
Seven.
Eight two. A, A is an apple, too.
Okay, I thought that was, oh yes, A two. Alright, so, uh, it's McMurr.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, um, Public Safety and General Government to discuss and vote on whether to approve additional early voting locations within the City of Norwalk. I would like to move this item and speak to it if I may. Um, so we discussed this in our committee in the last meeting and I just wanted to clarify, um, because we didn't feel the verbiage was very clear that, um, the rationale behind this vote and keeping just the one early voting location here in City Hall um, was brought forward by Mr. Stuart Wells, our registrar of voters, and it was both to sort of wait and see what happens with the population that attends early voting. Um, also, if we were to open more polling locations, we had a debate on where those polling locations would be to be equitable. And it would also cost the city a significant amount of more money, um, per location. So that was sort of the rationale and, um, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I just wanted to clarify the verbiage and what we're voting on tonight. It is to keep the one polling location that we currently have, which is here in the City Hall in the community room.
Any questions or comments?
I guess I'd like to know how, how has that gone so far? Have we gotten any feedback on that?
So far, I think it's gone well, um, and, um, there hasn't been any complaints that I've heard of or that I believe any other committee has heard of or Stewart's office. Um, so I think it's going well. I think the presidential, um, election coming up will be really telling for us because obviously that's a higher turnout than other elections. Um, and so I did also want to note that at that time, once we find that out, we can reassess and revisit this, of course. Thank you.
Yes. Will there be more days added, um, for early voting for the presidential than there was to the primary?
That's a really good question. I think they're already set, but I can get that calendar to you. I think it's set by the Secretary of the State's office. And I would assume there are either extended hours or extended days for that because it is.
And how will that be communicated to the public?
That's a good question, too. We'll have to ask Stewart's office who's going to communicate that. I, I think, you know, communication is always key and I think we can always improve in that area. So that's something that we should talk about.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say, I did get two questions that it wasn't quite clear that on the actual voting day, you go to your normal in this, in this last round. I think it sort of talked a lot about early voting, so people didn't read down. Uh, and it was just a couple of people. So, but I don't think that has anything really to do with our decision on this. It's just maybe communication, as you said.
Should be noted, we're also working with the police department and the registrar's office because there were some questions and concerns. Uh, I believe that some of the polling places, people felt they weren't secure enough and some of the voters were able to walk into some of, so that was on primary day, so. Well, with the police department and the registrar's office are working on that. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed. Abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Now that brings us to item seven, C two, I believe. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Goldstein.
Uh, seven, C two, uh, approved the FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five capital budget with noted amendments. I'd like to move this and speak to it briefly.
Good floor.
Thank you. Um, just a quick clarification right at the gate. I, I know that the, the verbiage of the item actually says, you know, with noted amendments. I want to note that there aren't actually, um, there were not amendments made or passed at the economic and development meeting when considering the FY twenty-four, twenty-five capital budget. So at this moment, there are not amendments or proposed amendments. Um, I also, uh, last Thursday, the Economic and Community Development Committee had a four and a half hour meeting um, where, um, department heads from across the city and the Board of Education, um, came out, I thought, and gave very thorough presentations, um, and insight into their capital budget requests. Um, if you are interested, um, if you are listening on, uh, watching on YouTube or, you know, interested in learning more, it is publicly available on YouTube and I think on the site website, uh, for people to consider. And we, we worked late into the night to make sure that everyone got heard. Um, this capital budget and the mayor's recommended capital budget, um, in recognition of, you know, our financial constraints and the fact that this has been a tough budget year, uh, the mayor had requested the departments, um, make forty percent cuts to their capital budgets before we even, so before we even consider the rec, the mayor's recommended version. Um, I know that that is painful and that is, uh, definitely tough, but I do, um, want to commend the departments for, um, meeting the urgency of this. Um, so I know that, I, I know that people want to discuss this. I know there was a lot of discussion last week, but I also know um, that, uh, you know, my, for people who wanted to speak about this item because I know this is, um, a big item with a big booklet, so.
Hey, further discussion, comments? Ms. McMurr.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I know I say this every year, this is my third year, so it's not that often that I say it, but, um, I don't really know how to express how I feel about tonight's budget. Um, I think I'm frustrated and, um, a little bit heartbroken. Um, this shouldn't be personal, but for me, sometimes it is. Um, I put my heart and soul into this job and this budget was no different. Um, I will be the first one to say that my family and I enjoyed the Halloween party last year as well as the Christmas tree lighting. But I would be hypocritical after stating my wants versus need rhetoric last budget cycle and stand by this current budget as is. There are what I would call many wants in this capital budget and those are nice. Spending the day going through the capital budget line by line, it was a difficult job for me to find money to put towards a project I'm passionate about, but I was able to do it. That project is the renovation of the Station Four Firehouse. It is the second busiest fire station in the city. It was said during our last budget meeting by someone here that there are services that are non-negotiable and a safe and healthy fire station is towards the top of that list for me. We visited this station and the mildew and mold was so thick in the air, we had a hard time breathing. Many of the parts of that building are original dating back to nineteen sixty-seven and there have been OSHA violations that we have tried to fix, but still persist. We continue to grow as a city with more development and a growing population. With that comes the responsibility to maintain our safety services and maybe even increase them. I cannot in good conscience vote for the budget that pushes this off for parties, murals, extra parking at a dog park and more. In addition to this, I've said this before and I will say it again, I feel strongly that our financial process is broken. It needs an overhaul and fast. We cannot keep doing business this way and expect to have successful outcomes. I was told recently by a member of the BET that they do our dirty work for us. I not only find that completely presumptuous, but I also find it incredibly false. We all have our roles to play in this budget, but we are elected and are held rightfully so accountable by our constituents, our bosses, the people we work for. I not only have to look myself in the mirror and stand up for what's right for my kids, but I also have to look each and every one of you in the eyes, and the firefighters and the police officers and every other person who puts their lives on the line to keep us safe in this city. I am only speaking out on what I believe to be right and fair and what is best for our community as a whole. With that said, I will be voting no for this budget this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McMurr. Further comments or discussion? Mr. Juleski Eichner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are you the next one?
Pardon me?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, so I wanna, I, I have two sort of parts of what I want to speak to. I want to speak first generally and then I have a specific amendment to make. Um, but first I, I want to talk generally largely, I think, as an invitation to this group, to the city, um, to join us in conversations about the city charter as we continue to consider how it should be revised. I think that, um, as an elected official, uh, of the city, I nonetheless feel like I have, um, very little ability to actually direct the course of the city's budget, um, in either the operating or the capital side. Um, in a way that I think lets the citizens of the city hold me, the elected representative accountable for the work that I've actually done. And this is not a critique of ET, it's not a critique of any member of, um, the city, it's a critique of the structure that is put in place by our charter. It's put in place in nineteen thirteen, um, and not updated in nineteen fifty-two. And we finally have a version we can all read so that we can have this conversation. So I really urge everyone to engage in the charter revision conversations later this summer and then when the commission is actually reappointed in the fall. Because this process does not allow voters to connect to their elected representatives and expect their elected representatives to have authority and power to make changes to the budget. Um, so I, I think that's the starting place from which, um, you know, I have a great deal of frustration about, um, differences that are totally legitimate between, um, priorities. Everyone isn't held to have their priorities. Um, and nonetheless, because of the way this is structured, the council's ability to reflect our priorities is very limited. Um, and so the votes that we will be taking tonight does not actually necessarily reflect the priorities that this council, or certainly myself, would have put forward had we had the, um, flexibility that I think other structures might give us to do that. Um, that said, specifically on the capital budget, I joined Ms. McMurr in spending a great deal of time today trying to figure out, um, how we could reallocate three million dollars for the fire station because I do believe that is a priority for the health and safety of our city above many other needs, not diminish any of the needs that are in this capital budget, all of which I do believe we need. I do believe the staff has done tremendous work to try to slim down and to try to pinpoint the things that are most valuable to the city. That said, um, it is now my understanding, based on a reading of the charter, that I do think is correct, even though I, it is not what I would like the reading to be, that we do not have the authority to add the fire station in tonight. Given that, I did however, having spent a great many hours looking at this budget, I do would like to make amendment to cut certain amounts out of certain items um, to create a five thousand dollar down payment, shall we say, towards the fire station that we would like to see in the budget next year. Um, so I were making an amendment, um, or a motion, I should say. Did I say five? Oh, my goodness, five hundred thousand. Five hundred thousand, my apologies. Five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, let's be realistic here, folks. Um, uh, so I am making an amendment to, um, to cut five hundred thousand dollars from this budget. Um, the amendment would include line eight for ADA compliance. I'm, um, I'm proposing, uh, to remove twenty-five thousand dollars from that line. Um, I believe in a close reading of what is covered by those projects, that the sidewalk and curb improvements there could easily fit within the line we already have under TMP for ADA compliance, uh, sidewalks and curbs.
Excuse me, can I make a suggestion just for ease of
Yeah.
record-keeping here? Um, if you could, um, so you're making a motion to reduce, to reduce by five hundred thousand. If you could, um, just state each item in the amount and then you could go back and, and explain why. But just so that we could write it down.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, we're going to ask you to repeat the motion.
And we should take, we should take separate votes on each item that you wish to cut.
Sure, we can do that if that's easier.
Yeah.
That would, that actually, that would be much easier.
Okay, well, so we can certainly.
You want to go through the list first so that people know before, I think that in order for folks to understand how they may vote, I think it's important to understand all the items you're going to be proposing. You can do a separate motion on each one, but why don't you go through and just let everybody know what the items are?
I am happy to do that. So that was my first proposal. My second proposal is line twenty-two on our list, which is, um, police, line dispatch, cars and vans. I'm proposing remove, um, a hundred thousand from that line, which would take it down to five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Um, we have made significant headway on updating the police vehicles over the last several budget cycles. Um, and so, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, you have to read without justifying.
Well, you know, you, you could now because it's going to be separate motions, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it that way then.
Mayor suggested that makes more sense.
Um, the, uh, under ECD, the Arts Commission, the Arts in Public Places Program. Um, I'm, uh, proposing that we remove that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't think that this year's capital budget is the year for new programs.
What line, please?
Uh, it's line forty-two.
You just let, let us know the line for some people.
Sure, yes, thank you. Um, line. Um, line one hundred and eighteen, which is operations and, um, public works, fleet maintenance, various department fleet vehicles. Um, that line is currently at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I'm proposing removing sixty thousand of that. Um, I believe in looking at, um, our fleets, there's a number of ways we could reduce our fleet size, um, to be more economical. Uh, line fo- one hundred and forty-nine, operations and public works, park maintenance, um, Taylor Farm. Uh, that's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I'm proposing that we remove that hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I think we have another, a number of major projects pending and it makes sense for our parks department to be focused on other projects before adding. Um, and that totals, uh, five hundred thousand dollars.
Right. So if you want to make the motions individually, you now will make the motion, you will vote on each one.
Absolutely. So I will make, I will go ahead and make my first motion, um, which is for going back up to the top, uh, item eight, line eight, community services, um, which is again to modify the ADA compliance line to two hundred and forty-six, uh, thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars to two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. That's a removal of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there any discussion or comment on that motion, Mr. Burnett?
Yes, Ms. Law, thank you. Uh, I, I have an readiness in this in that has any discussion taken place with the various departments that would be affected by the reductions that are being recommended and what is the impact to those various departments by these reductions? And what is the impact to those various departments by these reductions? Um, the departments have spent their due diligence in submitting their capital budget request. And to me, it seems like we are arbitrarily, and I will state inappropriately. Uh, reducing the submissions from these departments and and saying we just, we're just going to as. Uh, Councilmember Nor- Nora Nadelski-Eichner just did, uh, say we're going to reduce your capital budget without. Understanding the impact of the projects they have planned to complete. So my unreadiness is where is the analysis of the impact? Of the reductions that are being presented before us. I would like to see those.
Do you, did you want to answer that or?
Sure, yeah. So thank you, um, Mr. Burnett. I think that that is an excellent question. And part of exactly what I'm trying to highlight with the challenges with the charter revision structure or the charter structure that currently is upon us. Um, these were presented to us, uh, as you all know, on Thursday night at the Economic and Community Development. Meeting and so we had a limited amount of time. I did reach out to every department. Um, I, excuse me, I or Councilmember McMur reached out to every department. This cut I have proposed here. I cannot represent that they have agreed to these cuts or that they feel like these cuts are appropriate. But again, we did reach out, we did inform, we did discuss, uh, we did, you know, ask for their input. Um, and again, I think that it is very important to stress that under the charter, we, this is actually specifically the authority we have. The charter grants us the authority to reduce, add, um, uh. Um, change, modify, or um, I'm forgetting the other one, um. Not relevant to this particular discussion. So this is our authority and our authority is to do it on the basis of the information we had and the timeline we shot.
So just to be clear, we do not have. Re- a response from the various departments that you're recommending reducing in terms of the impact of the reductions that you're proposing. Is that, is that what you just stated? You you reached out to them, but they have not provided a response.
Uh, they have not provided, provided a response that I would feel like I could represent to speak for them, no.
I think Mr. uh, Wiggins, I believe you had your hand, and Mr. Seed and then Ms. Murray. Mr. Wiggins?
If they um, have something directly to this topic, they can definitely speak. Um, I don't know if uh, Jalen or Melissa have something directly to what they were just saying. I don't, because mine is kind of overall budget.
All right, Ms. Mr. Seed and then Ms. Murray.
Yeah, um, I I really want to commend um, Ms. Nadelski-Eichner for um, taking the time to really make this motion and reduce. Some of this, but um, I think Ms. Burnett gave me some words that I really feel uneasy about this budget. Um, because we have heard the impact um, of the budget towards the constituents and we have got feedback from constituents. On how this budget is gonna affect them. And I feel like it's inappropriate to not reduce this more because I feel like just looking at the capital budget, there's a lot of wants. Um, in it, I mean, a quarter of a million dollars for essentially parties is a want that I feel like at this time is inappropriate. To spend quarter of a million dollars on special events, um, even though I love the events, the great events, but I feel like there's a lot of wants. Here and I feel like that's inappropriate to put on more of a burden to taxpayers. Um, this past Friday, um, Councilwoman Ayers and I, we heard from constituents, um, one senior citizen. Who drove the the bus here in Newark for over thirty years and her rent this last year was increased by eighty, eighty, eight, eight hundred dollars. And she's having a hard time live here, living here. We met with people who told us how hard it is to afford to stay in Newark and we just put more of a burden on them with wants. The, the police department is is asking for electric vehicles that they said um, is are not fu- fully functioning, functioning vehicles. And they, but they said that they were asked to add that to the budget and that's not something that's a direct need. And I believe in this budget, we need to really look at the needs of the city and anything that's a want, I feel like we should cut it. And five, five hundred thousand is a good start, but I feel like it's not enough. Um, because there's more that we could cut. We have to look at the impact um, and get the feedback from the constituents. And the impact that it's gonna have on their lives. Um, and I feel like that's more valuable than feedback and the impact of um, department heads. Um, because we need to listen to the people and for me in a good conscience, I can't vote um, on a budget when we're voting for once. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seed, Ms. Murray.
Yes, I'd like to um, address uh, Ms. uh, Councilmember Burnett's question about the, where was the analysis? I sat into the ECD meeting, even though I'm not on that committee for the four and a half hours and I listened to. The department heads layout really their case and their thought process behind their budgets. Um, so I, I think they did an exceptional job and I think that they laid out. Uh, you know, they certainly want to do the best for our community and I have so much respect for the staff here, so I thank them for that. But I do agree with Ms. Nadelski-Eichner on this one. I think we have room to come down a little bit. It is a tough year and I also believe that it is my role and I think it's implied in the way that our charter is written. The fact that we have council members that are at large and we have council members that are in district. And I am in District C where Station Four resides. I went and I did the research and I wasn't going to, I was against spending three million dollars this year. Um, and so I thought my mind was set and I went and walked through that firehouse. And I believe it absolutely is a need for the people of my community in District C and even for the rest of the city. And for the firefighters who work there to work under conditions that are fair. So um, I believe uh, Ms. Nadelski-Eichner's amendment is reasonable. And this is in a reasonable amount of money to look at cutting.
Further comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Burnett.
Thank you. I I I just, you know, there was several council members here that were not on the council. But I I recall a couple of capital budgets ago when I brought forward a recommendation. To identify additional dollars for the police department. For, for several very vital and essential vehicles that they needed in the fleet. And going through the same process of 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 combing through the capital budget. My suggestion was to take a hundred thousand dollars from a million dollar line item from DPW. Which I thought there was plenty of wiggle room to move a hundred million, a a hundred thousand dollars over to cover those vital vehicles. And it was not until the discussion was had with DPW where they said. We have accounted for every dollar in order to, for the vehicles that they sorely needed in DPW. And it wasn't until I received that input that I backed off and said, fine. Can't take that money from that department because they gave me some feedback, they gave us some feedback. That they accounted for every penny to make for the vehicles they need in DPW. So therefore, I took my recommendation off the table and said, we'll worry about it in future capital budget. So again, I go back to, I think it's important. Even though we might say that is our prerogative as council members to move dollars around. That we have transparency in at least hearing from departments. In terms of if we are arbitrarily going to take money from your capital budget, let's at least hear from you, what is the impact of us doing? And if we don't have that level of impact and review from those departments, we shouldn't be doing it. That's my position.
Mr. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I think when looking at this budget is kind of a spit in our, in the, in a people's face. To really think about having parties and um, and murals of that much money. To Jalen's point. It's about our constituents, the ones that lives here, that pays. Taxes here and I want to stay here. And I think even um, what Mr. Burnett said is 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 we, we're getting away from that. Um, I under, I I I get it, I understand what he means, but I think we can't care more about. The people that put us in these positions, well, we have to care more about the people that put us in these positions to run our city. Then, you know, um, departments that that possibly need the money to do, do a better job. Um, at, you know, handling the city. I I just, I just feel. We need to go back to the drawboard, um, and and scrub some of this budget. I think uh, Nora, um. Suggestion of what, five hundred thousand, I think we need to um, eh, more needs to be done. So I will be voting no and I hope, you know, our constituents' voice, you know, um. Was heard and my colleagues can do the same when, when thinking about this budget.
Ms. Ayers, I believe you're next and then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm quite concerned about some of the rhetoric and comments of my uh, colleagues. Even though I respect their position, um. It's almost a slap in the face to say that even though we have the right, the charter empowers us. To do the work of finding money where we can, to say that we have not done our due diligence. Um, as it was brought up, the meeting was public, it has been public, it has been on social platforms for over a week. So that is a substantial amount of time to allow people to go and see what each department. Has um, said. In addition to that, um, many of us who have had to stand on the hill in the light. By themselves to argue for different services and have had our colleagues tell us, oh, no, no, no. We can't do this because we don't want to increase taxes. And then the very people who are saying, okay, I'm gonna agree with you and cut very minimal. These are minimum cuts, these are not like slashes, very minimum cuts. For that, it it then to be said, we're not doing our job or we're not doing it in the way that. This particular person feels that it should be done. I am a service girl, I am a a hu- a community service person, I have a human service background. That's how I've made my bread and butter and I am someone who. Thinks that there's a lot of services that a city should offer its constituents so that they can have a quality of life. But I'm also someone that has common sense. Sometimes my colleagues get, they hide behind all of these things that they do in their professional life. But my grandmother would say common sense will get you farther than a piece of paper. If you have limited means. You gotta cut somewhere. That's just common sense. If we have limited means, we have to cut somewhere. And I don't think it gives uh, my colleague Ms. McMur or or um. Ms. Nadelski-Eichner any, um, I think they did their work. And I think it it doesn't give them any excitement to say, hey, can we cut here? But when you have. From what I was told, when you have egregious, um. An egregious atmosphere, an egregious, a- egregious things happening at that fire station. And these, these, my colleagues have done the work to find the money. I think we should support them. Um, your vote is your vote, I respect everybody's vote, but I cannot vote in good conscience. For a capital budget that doesn't allow us to do our jobs. And then when we are doing our jobs, our very own colleagues are popping us or smacking us on the hands and saying that we're not doing our due diligence. When both of these, both of my colleagues took their time to talk to the department heads. And for whatever their discussion, they still landed where they land. Now, if you, if the position is, well, let's table it so that individual people could have that conversation. I could respect that, but I I will never uh, be okay with anybody saying that. People who give, gave up their time to really be thoughtful in in presenting an amendment. Should not have done it because it was out of line and when it was your turn to do it, you didn't garner the support that you need. It takes eight votes. Simple math. It takes eight votes. And so you're either gonna vote it up or you're gonna vote it down. But we really need as a body to really think. If you, if you're arguing so vigorously on the operational side. And then you get some of us who argue the opposite to cut on the capital side or to reappropriate funds on the capital side. I I think that should be, that should be listened to. When other people had the same opportunity to do the work of my two colleagues. But they were the only ones that did the work. And so I will have to support the amendment that has been raised.
Mr. Frey.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to take um. I I'm very upset about the comment that uh, there are people that have not taken due diligence. You, I'm sorry.
You can be upset, that's your right.
Thank you. Um, I think it's, it's inappropriate for you to, to indicate that people weren't taking due diligence. When they picked this, took this job to begin with. Um, I spent a many, many hours going through the capital budget, as did a lot of other people. We spent four and a half hours last Thursday going through this. We spoke to every department head. We asked them specifically, is this a comfortable budget for you? Is there anything that, that we have any space here to move? And none of them came and said, well, yeah, we can give this up or we can give that up, okay? The other thing too is we have to put in perspective here. This budget started out at seven hundred thousand dollars, okay? And the mayor came through and told everybody to cut it by forty percent, okay? We're forgetting some of that, I think. People that put those budgets together, those department heads worked very, very hard to get that forty percent out. And now it's down and now you want to come back and arbitrarily, maybe not arbitrarily. You did some due diligence, some, some, some other members of the, of the body here, went back, took the time to look at it again. As I did plenty of times and said, okay, here's a couple of things that we can take out. Whether you like it or not, that's what we're gonna suggest. That's not the way you do budgets. You get a consensus from the budget, especially when the department's head, heads have worked so hard. To cut forty percent out of their budget first. That's all I have to say.
I think Ms. Young, were you?
Well, I think you had some.
Uh, well, we have to let everybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak first. And uh, okay, so we want Mr. Seed, Ms. Murray and Mr. Burnett.
I just wanted to um, kind of address what Mr. Frey said. Um, it's not necessarily true with, when I asked the police, um, the chief of police, I asked him about the electric vehicles. Um, and I asked him if he needed them. His answer was that it was a directive given from City Hall. It wasn't that he couldn't go without them, was that he was asked to do that. Uh, we also found that in the ADA department, that they addressed that we were actually kind of wasting money. Because people aren't talking to ADA and we wasted money at at um, the beach because we had to go fix something that we didn't think about. Um, so there is room in the budget and I think that was brought out in that discussion. Um, not everybody said, well, we can't really make movement. Um, Chief Police with the vehicles, um. Didn't say he can make, make moves, but he he said that it wasn't, it wasn't really a, a, a need. Um, there are things that we could do with ADA, just simply having ADA a part of the process so that we don't make mistakes and have to go back. Couple of months or years later to fix them. Um, so there was things in that meeting, uh, where there was a lot of room um, to, to make some cuts.
If I just want to make one comment, the police get ten to eleven vehicles every year. They were told to search for electric vehicles. They were told to put vehicles in a budget that they didn't need. So, Ms. Murray.
Yes, I just wanted to address, um, I I I agree with uh, with what Councilman Seed just said. In uh, the Economic and Community Development Meeting, I specifically asked if there was overlap between the ADA and the TMP. As Ms. Nadelski-Eichner has put on the table and we went through that and listening to them, I concluded that there is likely. So I did ask in an open public meeting and um, it's not to say that they weren't being truthful, but obviously they're. Putting their program together as these, and TMP is and when, when I listened to both uh, answers and in both. Um, narratives, I found overlap. So I believe I did do my due diligence there uh, publicly. So a- and I would also say that our process, I mean, we, we go, we put a budget and it goes to the BET and they shave. So Mr. Frey's um, assertion that we're not supposed to shave anything once uh, departments put it together is. I, I don't think it's accurate, it's not, it's not the way it works. So I think we are able to shave a little when we need to.
Mr. Burnett and then Ms. Nadelski-Eichner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in response to the comments made by Councilmember Ayers. Um, this particular person is asking a common sense question, which is simply what is the impact? Of these reductions as presented by the departments? That's a common sense question. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Juleski-Eichner?
Thank you, and I do appreciate Mr. Burnett's concerns. I think they're very valid concerns. Um, and we did our best to, you know, answer them to our own satisfaction today. Again, we heard four and a half hours from the um, committee uh, meeting. I agree, I mean, I can assure you that my proposals are not arbitrary. They are based on things that I heard. And my evaluation of the written materials, of what I heard, of questions that I asked staff today. It made me feel like these are places where my personal belief is that we could cut these this. It made me feel like these are places where my personal belief is that we could cut these this year. And still be able to achieve all of our objectives for the year, so there is nothing arbitrary about that and I do want to be careful there. That is not to say that, again, I feel comfortable representing that staff would agree. That's a different thing, I cannot speak for staff, and so I just want to be very clear about what I'm saying about my process versus the question of what staff would say. And again, I do want to be extremely clear that this is no disrespect to our staff who work enormously hard, are very creative, have come up with terrific ideas. And quite frankly, again, I would, in many senses, I would actually have preferred to fund more things. But those things are not available for us. They were not on the finance recommended budget, therefore we cannot reinstate them. So the fact that I would have spent differently is at this point not necessarily on the table for us. So again, it is, I think, really important to acknowledge the hard work that went in. Everyone has different priorities, I have no disrespect for anyone's priorities, it is perfectly fine with me. As someone said, if any, if people vote these down, this is the point of this process, we are supposed to disagree, we are supposed to discuss. I am thrilled with votes that go in different ways because I think that that shows that we are all thinking critically about what's happening here. So uh anyway, I'm, like I said, I really uh welcome the thought and I welcome to hear more from staff on these various things.
Uh, I think Ms. Young, go ahead.
Just the council president just asked me uh if if I could just um confirm the standard of what you could do here. Fund of the Charter, she thought that would be helpful. Um, and the motion that was made was correct in that um Councilman Najalski uh that proposed um to, in this case, reduce um certain items. And so uh section ten dash sixteen uh subsection A of the Charter uh upon receipt of the recommendations from the Board of Investment Taxation allows the council to approve, reject, reduce or re-see any item in the proposed capital budget. So um when you're, when you're taking, you're considering in the motion is um how to handle each particular item. You can't, for example, say lump sum, we just want to reduce the capital budget by five hundred thousand. It has to be any, any adjustment, whether it be to to uh yes, the the to uh to reject or to reduce has to be uh per item as as you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Goldstein. And Ms. Smith.
I I just have a very specific question about the specific motion that's on the floor. Because it's right now, the the motion that's on the floor is just for the first item about moving twenty-five thousand dollars from the ADA compliance budget. I remember at last week's meeting, the a jet, the item that we were discussing was their full request for three hundred thousand, but the mayor's request, i- i- recommendation is for two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Just so I understand your request, your motion, I'm sorry. That would be reducing it to, and I'm doing right, it was two hundred twenty-one. Yeah, this is why I went to law school. But just so I understand, when you reached out to the ADA officer. Did he provide a response as to how a reduction from not three hundred but from two forty-six to two twenty-one is going to affect what um he proposed to do, you know, at our meeting last week?
Thank you, and and no, this is one, this is to the extent that something is arbitrary, this is probably the closest to arbitrary. I did not get a response to my questions. That said, I am looking, if you look in our capital budget book, there's three priority items. And items two and three are both in both sidewalks and curbs and ADA compliance. When you look at TMP and the um allocation we make for them. I felt reasonably comfortable with suggesting that that shift would probably be within the realm of things that wouldn't cause catastrophe to Mr. Burnett's point. So I wish I had gotten a response from staff, I emailed multiple staff members to ask about this. Um, Ms. McMur made a phone call to ask about this, we did not get an answer in a timely fashion.
The the only thing I would just, the only other thing I would note, just for uh council members who were not present at the meeting last week, I think there was a question to, and I'm forgetting this name because it had, it was sort of his name, I forgot. About the three items and the proj- his projected costs for each. The third, the second and third, which really has to do with curb ramps and um the sidewalks. He thought each would be approximately around fifty thousand. It was my understanding from his testimony, I'm calling testimony for what he said. Just so everyone has some context here.
Ms. Smith.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. So knowing that the departments all shaved their budgets by forty percent. And not having the opportunity to hear from um the chiefs um and department heads how this would affect their budget. I'm not comfortable um with these particular amendments. Except possibly, possibly around um the um Arts Commission and I'll have some questions about that particular one when we get to it. I um, you know, in the ECD meeting, um I was, like many members, um really moved by Chief Otto um discussion and and uh description of the Fire Department and I did see it. And it is, uh, the conditions are um appalling. Um, and that firehouse does need major renovations. That being said, we know that we cannot add that back in. Um, we also have been made aware, thank you, Mayor, that um it is um intended for next year's budget because of um items that must be um taken care of this year, considering Lockwood Matthews match and being one of them. And um, you know, I do want to see that firehouse done and I and I feel assured that it will be done next year and it will be included in the budget next year. You know, five hundred thousand um is not gonna get us that firehouse. So um I don't know, I I I also want to just, you know, take a moment to talk about the process, I think capital capital budget process has been faulty all along. Um, I do think that, you know, that needs to be discussed during the um Charter Revision Commission um uh, you know, uh forums and and whatnot, I I really do think it needs work, operating budget, we need much more communication. So, you know, I look forward to those discussions. Um, but again, I will, you know, we'll move through these. Um, and you know, again, I I may have questions about the the Arts Commission one and and what uh you're thinking there. I do support arts, I do supply, love those events, um I I've talked about it here on this floor. You know, I do wonder if there's a way we can look at, you know, do we need all of them? Can we, you know, possibly, um, you know, cut back a little bit here and there? But that's not the kind of money we're talking about that's gonna get the firehouse done, so um, you know, those are just my comments and thoughts.
Ms. Shanahan and then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to adopt a lot of um Ms. Smith's comments about the process and communication. Of course, this year was particularly difficult in light of the fact that we didn't have the CFO and we were doing a lot of things by the seat of our pants. And that's difficult and while I do support that there, um you know, I also adopt a lot of Mr. Freyer's comments that we have asked the departments to reduce their budgets by forty percent and that is a significant number. So I would have loved to have thought about Ms. Najalski Eichner's thoughts about further reductions. Um, given exactly zero minutes to really prepare for that, that's pretty difficult, so um, more time would obviously be helpful. But I do notice that we have some of our staff members on the call and I don't know whether or not it'd be helpful at all to address some of these questions to them at this time, that that's pretty much up to Mr. Goldstein and the mayor about whether we should be bringing them into the conversation. But without further information, I feel really uncomfortable at this point making uh positive votes on this amendment without more information.
Ms. Ms. Ayers.
Um, I just need to add this to the conversation. The public deserves to hear us in this chamber speak our our position, regardless if we disagree. I disagree strongly with them, some of my colleagues. But the public deserves to hear the banter. We a lot of times make votes and decisions and the public is not allowed to hear. Why, why you stand where you stand? I never back down, nor am I ever concerned about an opposing position. This is a democracy. Everybody's not supposed to agree. But I think in this amendment something that Barbara said resonated with me. There are places where you might not agree with the totality of the amendment. But because it is broken down in the way that the Charter allows us to break down the amendment, there may be places where we can make revisions. I think it's healthy for the council to get in the practice of doing that. Not to um take away from the work that staff does. I understand the work, I respect the work that staff does. But we are also given, we are, again, that word, we are empowered to do what we are doing now. And so I think sometimes we get very caught up in the perception of what someone is saying or how someone is saying or that did not align with what I want. I would ask all of my colleagues, including myself to do this exercise with the provision, with the mindset, not the provision, with the mindset of knowing that this is what we're supposed to be doing. This is what, it it comes to us multiple times, it goes to me so that we can take those fine, that fine look at things. This is what we are supposed to be doing. And it's not that we're never gonna fund those things. But if we talk, when we look at the operational side and we talk about how how tight the pocket, the pocketbook is on that side and how we're gonna do this phasing, this unfortunately are are, it's gonna be the start of several cuts that have to happen. That's just the world we are living in and I don't think it's personal um on one department or the other. I think it's fifteen people trying to do their best. That's it.
Any further comment or discussion? First, Mr. Yohana.
Low question now, to 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 Councilmember uh Najalski Eichner. Um, I'm I'm trying to understand the reasoning behind waiting to the very last minute to put forward these amendments. Um, if you can provide some clarity, I wish we would have additional information to be able to conduct my own personal proper assessment of whether it's going through the actual budget or whether it's having discussions with individuals from the city.
Um, thank you, Councilmember, and I I do regret that that is how this played out. Um, I think that uh Councilmember McMur and I spent a significant amount of time, quite frankly, a number of hours today going back and forth. Trying to get answers to questions, trying to figure out whether our our perception of certain issues was in fact correct. Um, and by the time uh we learned this afternoon that we can in fact could not put the three million um proposal forward for the station and then we needed to decide whether we were going to make another proposal or not. I needed to spend some time thinking about that, that's the world that we live in. Um, so yes, I wish that I had had time to bring this forward earlier. Um, but I needed to hear everything on Thursday night before I could start my thoughts. Um, I wanted to hear from my colleagues last night and because I do have a great deal of respect for this body. Um, before I, you know, made thoughts and this is where we're at. So and I think that again, that's a perfectly valid reason for not voting for my amendment. I'm totally fine with the critique that is inherent in that, that yes, we did not present this to each other with sufficient time. And that is, I think, again, a commentary on how we can do this process better in future years. Including how the committees um can potentially look earlier in the process before the, you know, um department requests even go in or before the Finance Committee budget comes out so that we have more time to have input earlier in the process. I think there's a lot of ways we could do this better. And that's a part of the conversation that I want to have with this council and part of the point of making these amendments is to help us as a council wrap up with exactly these questions.
Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember, so now I'll pose a question to to the rest of the group. Um, given that there's so many ideas that were put forward, should we table this? To be able to undertake some bit, like a like a much stronger assessment. Um, I know that, you know, just looking at what what was proposed kind of makes sense, but given that the fact that was presented such last minute, it kind of, kind of makes sense logically for us to possibly table it. So I'd be open to listen to everybody else to see what they think.
I just uh um wait for somebody maybe to suggest that, so um the the provision, the relevant provision of the Charter, I believe, is uh section ten dash sixteen subsection B. Which talks like, which provides a deadline for approval of the capital budget by the common council. And it provides that the common council must approve the proposed capital budget as amended on or before April fifteenth. So um if uh if you're gonna do that, I think you would have to have a special meeting um prior to April fifteenth.
So what's what's the consequences of not meeting that deadline according to the Charter?
And if there is a, is there an authorization to extend the deadline?
Uh, any item not rejected or reduced by the common council, it uh is deemed approved by the council. And that within that provision. Just something I looked at earlier this afternoon, I gotta ask myself the same question. So I I again, if you wanna, you wanna reconsider, you wanna consider this at another meeting, you just have to hold this uh notice and hold a special meeting prior to April.
Right, right, you'd have to be held on the fifteenth probably.
Yeah, you could do on the fifteenth, that's, you'd suggest that.
Is Ms. Donnie still asking questions?
I I can speak a little bit about some of my concerns at the moment, if, okay? Yeah, I I I feel like we did not build this budget together and I I have listened to everybody. Um, all of the department chairs and stuff and I I do respect their professionalism, however they're in their own worlds too. And I know we're here because of the trust of the public and one of the things that they, that they lose trust in us when we hear about the seventy-five thousand dollar Christmas tree, I know people are probably sick of hearing about it, but to see events back uh on here after hearing about the Christmas tree over and over again um is kind of tone deaf. I do appreciate what Sabrina does. Um, I know she shook the bushes to get letters to us in support of the events. However, I would like to have that effort put towards maybe getting some of the developers and some of the the people that are in those areas to support them. You know, we do have community members that would like to chip in and do some of those things. I I ran Sonora Celebration for years, you know, with not a dime from the city and we pulled it off. We have the Oyster Festival, an amazing event that happens every summer, we have the NICE Festival, we have um amazing things that go on without the city spending, you know, staff time on them. But we could support and collaborate with them would be a change in a paradigm that I would like to see. When I saw that, the first thought in my head was you know, that we're fiddling while Rome burns, right, with with this? And and then shift that to what's going on with the firehouse. I'm privileged enough to show up in the night on the the worst nights that the people have. And I really trust that the firemen are gonna be there. And when they've been sleeping for twenty, twenty-four, forty-eight hours in a space that you can hardly breathe in. They're not on their A game, I need them to be on their A game, I need them to get there as soon as possible. And when we don't have a facility that that helps that happen, I think that our priorities need to be reassessed. That's my position, so I I can't vote for a budget that has those priorities set up.
Mr. Goldstein.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, I just want to speak to a couple of things because there have been some two levels of comments about process. Um, I agree with Greg's overall comments that, you know, we want to be informed before making a decision, last-minute amendments generally lead to rash policymaking decisions, um and we want to try and not do that. Um, I also think that sometimes, you know, even if it's a last minute, you know, I mean, there are you know, it is obviously we need to consider them and and we've sort of been talking overall. One thing I do want to mention about this particular item, the first item, is I know we've been sort of talking more gentlemanly, there's only one motion. This, the person who presented this at the Economic Community Development. It was an interesting presentation, it was, it was not as specific as an example like which Councilmember Burnett brought up where they were able to account for every dollar in their request. That was not my understanding and I don't think that was the committee's understanding of this particular department's request, especially considering it was sort of an adjacent role kind of project alongside TMP, which would normally be the primary department response. which would normally be the primary department responsible for sidewalks and curbs. Um, I I do, I do think that I don't wanna let concerns about ballot concerns about process get in the way of what may very well be the right result. I do think that it's important for us to be cognizant of the fact that, um, you know, that you know, these items should be considered by us, and the charter does give us the right. Um, I have to say though, I mean, on the merits, I do think it is worth considering approving this amendment if for no other reason than the presentation presented to the Economic Community Development Committee was not as detailed and specific, nor was the submission provided to the committee um as specific as frankly, a lot of other department submissions. Um, I also wanna note a couple of things, just so everyone's aware. One, our capital budget books were provided to us several weeks ago. Um, I believe they were provided at the time we voted on the operating budget, so it's not like we had this, you know, we were given this book um last night. I also wanna say, just in my capacity as the Chair of the Economic Community Development, many of the things that I um have spoken with departments about, you know, after sort of the four and a half hour meeting that happened last Thursday, is figuring out how to reroute this process in the committee to make sure that members have more time to ask questions, consider, and also give departments more time to present, especially as the night wore on, and there were departments that ran through a lot of presentations, and in large part, they had felt rushed because it was ten o'clock at night, and that's not fair enough. So I I do take seriously the suggestions um of my colleagues um to take a look at the capital budget process that we do here in the common council. Um, and I commit to you now, you know, as your colleague, that I will work with the departments to make this a smoother and fairer and 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 more accommodating process in the future. Obviously, I would like um to hear your ideas and suggestions about how to make that better, so we can all feel a little better. Um, hopefully coming into this process next year. Um, so that's sort of my thoughts.
Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Murray.
Um, quickly, cuz I know Madam President has yet. Um, I my, I wanted to mention that my um assessment of the presentation was the same as yours. It wasn't necessarily as specific, not that he didn't do a great job and everybody does their best, but I agree with you on that. Um, the other thing I would like to say, uh, I'd like to commend you. It was a four and a half hour meeting, but I'm not on the committee and you allow time for uh me to ask questions, and I think that's part of it, is uh allowing space and time to your questions. So thank you, Chair Goldstein, I really appreciate it. Um, I do wanna mention, one thing I am very concerned about is that we don't take away from really important priorities and projects from the city, and I don't believe this amendment does. For example, TMP is so important to our walkable spaces and uh to our green spaces, and some of that greenery and some of that artwork does actually channel um traffic the way it needs to, to make our streets safer, very much a priority for our city. I don't believe this amendment takes away from that. Um, and I've had conversations with people who have asked us to cut, you know, budget more, and I said I disagreed on touching sort of plans that if we cut them now, will cost us more later to do them right later. And so I don't believe this amendment does that, but I'm not um as pro-cutting as some of my other colleagues are. I still think we need to kind of steer the course that on things that may cost us more later.
Ms. Young.
So this does not come easy to anybody. This process starts in the city in November. And it is now April, going into May. So more than half a year, city staff is focusing on a budget. And I think what I'm finding out of all of this is that the process is flawed. The time for us to be engaged in this is not in April, it's not in March, it may be January. And we've got to find a way to do this a lot better. Um, because to have a meeting on Thursday, to look at the budget, and then come together and on Mon- Monday and say, what kind of changes can we make? And then to have two council members who take up all of their time during the day to try to come up with something is not fair, and it's not enough time to do the work the way that we want it to be done. I appreciate what Ms. McMur and Ms. Madroski Eichner have done. That wasn't easy. But it's very difficult to pick up a phone at at the eleventh hour to a department head and say, hey, I wanna slash your budget even more in such bad times. It's unrealistic, and it just isn't fair. We all live in the city. We are all gonna have to deal with the changes and the decisions that we make at this table, and nobody here is doing that lightly. No matter what anybody thinks, anybody's level of understanding is, we do not comment this lightly as we should not. And this is difficult, um, and you can tell by the passion that people have talking about this. Are there things in this budget that I think we can do better about? Yes, I questioned um the fire station. I don't know if I was the first person or the second person to even bring up the question about, well, what do you need at this fire station? And so it was overwhelming what we heard, but we heard that at the last hour. There has to be another way. And and I think uh Ms. Madroski Eichner and I have been kind of going back and forth with some ideas. And maybe it's a check the box. Maybe we start having um these items or for for the next budget presented earlier during one of our meetings, so that we get a sense of what it is each department is looking at, and what that looks like, and what that will cause. There are some things that we need to do that I think we just have not explored them yet. Um, I questioned um the police vehicles, the motorcycles. I questioned. One of the things that I heard brought up was the ADA. One of the things that we do in the city, um, when we budget, we have a dedicated ADA coordinator that is 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 part of, um, I don't know if it was the Department of, it's it's federally mandated. And so in twenty twenty, twenty thirteen, we had a compliance and transition plan for the city of Norwalk. And we hired an ADA coordinator. The issue becomes each department that deals with those types of things, put it in their budget. So you're gonna find it in several different places, and maybe we should not. Maybe we should centralize that a little bit more, and so that we get a better understanding of what our ADA projects look like. Um, I think that that is something that we can do. Um, so I I I just have to say, this is not easy. Um, the city staff work hard at putting this together. This is what we pay them for, and this is what they do. This is their job. And if it's not right, then we need to address that too, but I think that they all are doing this the right way. And I have to agree with my colleagues who are talking about the money to have Christmas trees. Yes, we talk about how expensive that is, but on the flip side of that, when the, when when Sabrina and the Economic and Development Department get feedback from the businesses on the street that say how that couple of events helped them. So who are we helping hurting when we say we don't wanna do that? Because those businesses are the businesses that we need to pay taxes as well, right? And when you talk about where they are, where these events are held, they're in small communities, right, with small businesses. But that's how you keep people interested in the city, right, by providing those extra things. Do we need all of them? Maybe not. But this is not going to get easier next year. And so we really need to come up with a better way of managing this and attacking this. And so I I I I appreciate what's happened, um, what has been presented. Um, but I also think that if we can table this, Mayor. Maybe we do, but then we also have to figure out, and if if that's something that we want to do, but then when will we meet again?
Before you make the motion to table, Chris, I just wanna ask for a procedural question. So I'm looking at the agenda. It says, I believe the item we're on is Finance Committee Presentation of BET Approved Operating Budget for Physical Year Twenty. Yeah, so prove the, prove the capital budget with with noted amendments. Okay, so yeah, so you would do.
I I I I don't.
You asked about tabling. If somebody makes a motion to table, that's gets voted on right away.
It may make sense if if you're gonna go down that road. Maybe that the the motions that are, so at least the first motion that's been presented be withdrawn, and then to do a motion to table, so that you're tabling, just so it's clear on the agenda.
Right.
So that what you're tabling is the motion to, you're tabling the um the approval of the FY twenty-four, twenty-five capital budget, rather than having it tabled on a single item motion.
Can I just say, Dewan has his hand up for a while.
Mayor Dewan had his hand up.
No, I he's, I see the balloons on his screen.
I don't know who did the balloons, but um. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I think when, you know, just listening to Darlene, um, when about the events and all of these things, I think we have to once again be aware about the community. And I think in this process, I know we represent the community, so how can we do a better job at letting the community have a say? We heard the community and our constituents speak today about this exact thing that we're talking about. Um, yes, it was one person that spoke, well, two people that spoke specifically about the uh the community events, which is a quarter of a million dollars. Like, are we listening to our constituents? And I think that's that's what's missing here. Every time we talk, we're talking about, you know, you know, things from our perspective, but we're here to serve our constituents. These are the people that vote as in these uh positions, right? And like, can we like take a time to really think about who we serving, who are we serving? And um, I don't know how that look going forward, but I would love to have a process where our constituents have more of a say. Um, you know, to how this budget looks, and I know it's supposed to be us that represents them, but when they come, we're still not talking to what they're speaking on. And we still kind of like vote how we wanna vote. We hear our constituents, and no one's, no one's talking about it. So I I just wanna just say that and 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 leave it there.
Yeah, there's a procedural thing on the floor first. Well, no, there's a procedural thing. Uh, if Nora, Ms. Madroski Eichner wants to withdraw the motion temporarily, she can do that. If you then want to make a motion to table, that would be the time to do that. I think we've probably gone over pretty much everything about this operating, this capital budget. So let's start first with Ms. Madroski Eichner. Okay, but yeah, but everybody's talking the same thing over and over again. So yes, Mr. Mr. Goldstein.
Um, I just wanna make sure we're all clear on this, cuz I looked at our capital budget calendar again. The fifteenth is Monday. So.
Oh, it's this Monday.
Yeah, it's this Monday. So.
Yeah.
I don't know when we would be considering to hold a second meeting, so before we table this, I think we should.
You'd have to have it on Monday, probably.
We have to have it on Monday, so I just want everyone to know that.
In transparency, uh, I will not be here. I'll be in, I'm leaving for Denver tomorrow for my grandson. It'll be my grandson's birthday that day.
Ms. Murray.
Yeah, I I just, I didn't think I was talking about the same thing. To Mr. Wiggins' point, I have heard constituents talking about, you know, they don't like the Christmas tree. I've also heard constituents say, we really need that it's community building. And I feel that s- s- shortening that, skipping that, and building a new system loses momentum. And I think we're building momentum on that. We are building Perks Foundation and have plans to move public-private partnership, so.
Okay, so you don't wanna make a motion.
I I'm okay. That was just an idea.
Do you uh? Why don't, why don't we do this then? Because you have probably four or five uh motions.
Right.
Okay. I think we should, I I think everybody's probably had an opportunity to be heard. And people are probably ready to vote. So what we'll do, if you have no objections, we'll vote on each individual motions. But after each motion, we can open the floor for comments on that motion only, rather than the process and all that. Okay? So if you would, you already made the motion, and so everybody's clear, would you?
So um, the motion that is on the floor is to um on line item eight, Community Services ADA Compliance, to remove two hundred and fifty thousand uh because the uh, which would reduce the amount to two hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. That's the motion on the floor.
So the motion on the floor is to reduce items eight, uh line item eight ADA compliance to two thousand, two hun- to two hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Is there any comment on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? One, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. One, two, uh.
Dewan.
Is it, you're in favor of Dewan? Okay, and opposed? Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, so that motion passes.
By a, by a eight to seven.
Eight to seven vote. Now, would you read your second motion?
I would. Um, so uh line item twenty-two, Police and Combined Dispatch, Cars and Vans, motion is to reduce uh the mayor's recommended budget by a hundred thousand dollars, so that would uh take the line item to five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Six. One, two, three, four, five, six. Uh, seven for Dewan, opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So that motion fails. Next motion.
Um, line item forty-two, Economic and Community Development, Arts and Public Places Program. Um, my motion is to reduce uh or to remove this item, um, so or reject this item, I guess, cuz it's a removal of the entire one hundred and fifty thousand.
Say the amount again?
I can't, so I'm I'm uh reducing this item by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it has a zero dollar value.
So that, so Economic and Community Development under Arts and Culture, uh, you wanna zero that mine item out.
Correct.
Okay, all, uh, any comments on that motion, Ms. Smith?
So this is specific to the art in public places, not the events. Correct, okay. Um, and my thinking on that is that it, the, by leaving the events line in there, if the um again, our very respected staff wants to redirect some of the events line to this, it gives them flexibility to consider that. Um, but I felt like a new program this year, this was just on the city review, that was my logic on this one.
We have a department chief that watched, has raised her hand to answer any questions you might have about that. So would you, where's Larry?
And by the way, just so we're clear, um, I see somebody else may have a hand up. Uh, the only folks who could provide comment now are staff members uh whom the council calls upon. So members of the public do not have a right to speak. However, if the council would like to uh ask questions of a of a staff person, and it looks like uh Ms. Vonische is is available to do so, um, you have that that opportunity.
If, Ms. Vonische, can you unmute yourself, or do we need Larry?
Yeah, I think I'm unmuted.
We can hear you. So uh, you've heard the item, uh Economic and Community Development under Arts and Culture uh to zero that item out, uh remove what, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes.
Uh, down to zero. Um, does any person on the council have a question for Ms. Vonische? Ms. Smith?
So, yeah, my question really is, are, would you be able to redirect those funds? Because what I'm seeing here is, is the Art in Public Places is specific to the Arts Commission, but the events are fall under Business uh and and Community Development. Can they be interchanged?
Yep, so I'll just give a little bit of context on this one. So this line item was actually two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it was an effort in uh to further our Arts and Cultural District um initiative. As you know, we um had the Arts and Cultural District Committee created this year, and the ordinance um is in place. And actually, the state is coming in May to be able to view our district and and designate that geography. So this effort was fully aligned with that. As I said originally, it was uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the effort related to um one very large celebration for the city of Norwalk to be able to fully adopt the Arts and Cultural District um through an event. Now, the funding was not for the event. When we were asked to reduce by forty percent, we actually reduced this to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the difference was that we were looking at, with the two hundred and fifty thousand, we were actually looking at um having twenty-five artists come in and be able to paint twenty-five different murals for the city as a whole, and be able to celebrate that in a really, really large way. When we reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand, um, what we said with the Arts Commission is that we wouldn't do twenty- When we reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand, um, what we said with the Arts Commission is that we wouldn't do twenty five murals, we'd actually do fifteen murals. And as a result of doing fifteen murals, we'd have different artists come in, be able to do a call for artists, be able to include the community um, in a really big way. The way that we talked about it was actually marrying it as a special event, but not using special events dollars. So we would do an event in July. We were thinking about doing it at Bets Park where the murals could be set up. All the way around the park and the community could come out and actually participate in the mural production. Um, we also talked about marrying that with some sort of water activation, like a boat parade to really be able to celebrate summer in Norwalk. Along with this fifteen mural effort and initiative that we thought would get really great um. Positive community response. And so uh, I just want to lay out that it's not a special event. Uh, fund, it's actually in a fund to be able to support the production of fifteen murals in a very. Community-driven aspect way um, that would help, you know, that we think will further the Arts and Cultural District uh, initiative through the city.
Okay, so then if it's not funded, you would just ask for it again next year?
If it's not funded, we would ask for it again next year. Um, and we would have to put off the um, production of the fifteen murals along with that. Particular aspect of the event for the summer.
Okay, but it wouldn't affect the events, uh, you know, the Halloween, the um, holiday events that seem to be such a great benefit to the community. And our businesses.
The way that we had looked at it is that we would host four large events each season. And so one would be the holiday event. Um, we already looked at uh, reducing the two holiday events down to the one holiday event. The Halloween event, um, we looked at a spring event that would be very little funding. Um, and then we also looked at a summer event and this would be the summer event. So the one fifty was supposed to be sort of the backbone of that summer event. We can still host a summer event. But it won't include that extra um, arts and cultural celebration piece with the fifteen murals. So um. The answer is no, we can still hold all of those events, but um, the summer one will be reduced in scope and scale because of the. Because of, we wouldn't be including that mural aspect.
Okay.
Mister Wiggins?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, is there any way that we can get other businesses involved? I I think it was uh, Nicole or. Ms. Nagowski that said, um, really thinking about getting other people and businesses involved. That can take off some of the load. Um. I don't know if that's that, if it could be a city business partnership, I don't know, but. I think it would be some businesses that will would love to kind of sponsor some of these events. Was that ever brought up or was that ever brought to some of the businesses?
Are you talking about this particular item, we're giving businesses to um. To uh, sponsor it?
Yeah, to some, to uh, sponsor some of the funds.
They, they, uh, cities always reaching out for different sponsors for different things. Very hard to get people to sponsor things right now. Because of how things are running as far as uh, you know, some of the businesses in town and their commercial, uh, you know, their. Their businesses. And so it's it's hard because a lot, there, a lot of people are reaching out to them. A lot of other people are reaching out for sponsorships. Miss uh, Miss Ayers.
Just a um, point of clarification. When you um. Stated the arts and cultural area. I think I know where it is, but can you just let us know where is the designated arts and cultural area? Just for a point of clarity, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's actually the urban core. So it's all of South Norwalk, including Wall Street, West Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Miss Murray.
I just wanted to clarify also, this doesn't uh, if the art pieces aren't funded, it doesn't in any way impact the state designating the area. And and that uh, process that you were working through, is that correct?
That is correct, yep. Um, what it does, what is required in the capital budget, which has not been discussed tonight, is the need for an arts and cultural plan. That is required as part of the Arts and Cultural District, but this particular item, the one hundred and fifty Arts and Public Places is not a requirement.
Um, just, just um, a point of clarification, are these local artists or have we reached out to local artists or are we bringing artists in from out of town?
Yep, so we always, uh, usually what we do is a call for artists, which allows different artists from different areas to be able to. Respond. Um, and we would go through the call up for artists process um, as part of the Arts Commission work. Usually we try to find somebody local. So for example, the work that we did on M L K, which is the staircase and also the work for other down Wilson. That was someone from Stanford who's fairly local and we included the community in the installation of that. Um, we're looking at an Ely Ave. Fence that runs the whole chain link fence along Ely Ave where the Metro North um, rail is. And that actually is a local artist and she's going to be working with the Board of Education and the school kids to be able to build that out. So. The preference is to be able to find local folks um, to be able to install those murals. And the other piece that we've always committed. Is that we would include the community in the installation of those murals.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments on this item?
Got one question.
The Shannon.
So Jess, if we were going to scale this down, is there a figure that you could say less than a hundred and fifty thousand that would cover a more fulsome summer event?
Yeah, you know, I think it's um. You know, it's really scope and scale, right? And so like I said, we originally started with twenty five murals. Uh, for two hundred and fifty thousand and now we um, had scaled that back to fifteen murals for a hundred and fifty thousand. I think um. You know, basically you can kind of see the the ratio of mural per cost. So I mean, it can be scaled down, absolutely. I think it just impacts our ability to. Have those murals um, come out in sort of one wave and um. You, you know, the answer is abs- the answer is yes, for sure. Um, I just think that it's um, I think that it's. You know, I. The answer is yes, and I I guess um, it just depends on what the council feels appropriate. You know, we tried to. We wanted to make a really big effort with the Arts and Cultural Peace and really kind of dive in with both feet or jump in with both feet. And I think. We did scale that back and, you know, I understand the. Everybody understands, all the department heads understand what um, what the mayor's office and the common council is tasked to do. So I would just say that. The answer is yes, and and I really leave it to you to to, you know, understand what that impact is.
Any further comment or discussion on this item? Would you read the item again so that?
Sure. Um, so this is a motion to um, reduce line forty two, uh, Economic and Community Developments. Uh, the Arts and Public Places Program to reduce that line item from a hundred and fifty thousand to zero.
All in favor? Eight, opposed? Okay, eight to seven, that one passes. And your next?
Uh, next item, yeah. Um, line one hundred eighteen, um, Operations and Public Works, uh, various department fleet vehicles. Um, so my motion is to reduce this um, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar item by sixty thousand dollars. So taking it to sixty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, the motion is to reduce line one eighteen to sixty thousand dollars.
To sixty five.
Sixty five thousand. Any comment or discussion on this item?
Could you just repeat that one more time? Sure, it's so the, it's to reduce the various department fleet vehicles. Um. Which is a number of uh, vehicles driven. Yes, thank you, to sixty five thousand dollars.
And what was the original number?
Hundred and twenty five thousand.
Any, um, no comment on that or Mister Goldstein?
I'm sorry.
Mister Frayer.
I just have a question, what vehicles are those?
Sure, so these are vehicles um, driven by staff members like purchasing and the tax assessors department. They're the vehicles that you see parked. Right out front when you drive into the parking lot. Um, and you'll find.
Did you say they're DPW?
They are under DPW, but the, this particular line.
They have central fleet.
Right, yes. These are not the vehicles being done, used for heavy labor or anything like that. These are the standard size cars and trucks.
Mister Goldstein?
Um, actually Jim had a question, so.
I have one, sorry. EV or regular?
Yeah, they're looking for the EVs. Every vehicle we're trying to purchase now, we're looking for EVs.
So these would be EVs that we're reducing.
Um, I will say that the list that is currently in our budget book has them being replaced with gas vehicles. I'm not saying that that's not correct, that they're in. Line, but the way that it's presented in our budget book.
It would either be hybrid or definitely EV. If those are the vehicles you're talking about. If the vehicles, vehicles you're talking about are the ones that are.
Vanessa has.
Ms. Valdairis, I'd like to call him.
Sorry?
Ms. Valdairis has her hand raised and she might be able to clarify that for us. I'd like to.
Yes, Ms. Valdairis.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, everyone. So I just want to clarify, uh, what is that item? So it's not only uh, the vehicle is what we call on, we put it as a separate item. Exactly because we want to make the difference between the heavy duty vehicles that are the trucks and the regular fleet vehicles. Um, so there is a list as part of the book on some of the vehicles that is due for replacement. And it it is the, and and as you can see, we have very old vehicles that that sometimes the mileage is not that high. But it's very expensive again to change parts. Um, the direction that we have received is that. Every single vehicle that will be replaced, we're gonna either go with a electric vehicle or a hybrid one. Uh, so the sixty, sixty five thousand dollars for each vehicle would be to replace for electric one.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Mister Goldstein?
I just want to note, and there's a page in this budget book which I can't find right now. But I I do think we have been advocating for years to change and modernize our. Misable vehicle fleet towards hybrid and electric vehicles. And we were first among many to argue for that change. So to come around now. And say, oh, no, thanks, we don't want this. And to be honest, I find that hard to manage. And I understand the. Inclination and I, and I think it's a righteous one to be trying to make sure that our is sufficient as possible. And I think there is an argument. About trying to make sure that our vehicle fleet is as efficient as possible, but I just can't personally take the stance that. Having advocated this and and I joked at the Economic Community Development meeting that I annoyed Chief Walsh about this a lot. Um, and 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 yet, the police department and a lot of departments have actually tried to modernize the fleet. So I just. I can't support this.
Mister Juski-Eichner.
Thank you, Mister Goldstein, and I fully agree. In fact, I'll be honest, say I appreciate the clarification that these are intended to be electric replacements. Because that is not clear to me from the budget book. Um, but I think that the other points that I'm actually trying to make here in particular. Um, is that I'm not convinced we need to have this many vehicles in our pool. So I, again, and Ms. Valdairis and I did speak about this. At some length this morning. Um, if you look at some of these vehicles, some of these vehicles have very high mileage, they were driven a lot. Some of these vehicles have been driven so little over seventeen years. I, we would be far cheaper for us to reimburse people for their mileage than to actually maintain a vehicle for that purpose. So I think part of what I'm trying to gesture toward here and with a cut that is, you know, a cut but not a total reduction. Is to strongly suggest that we should probably have fewer vehicles in total and we should be really be moving to more of a reimbursement model. Particularly for things like when people are traveling on regular roads, they're not going to construction sites. Um, you know. There is one vehicle on this list that we've had for seventeen years and has driven twenty seven thousand miles. We could have reimbursed people four times over for that. So that's my push here. It's not in any way to diminish the important, incredible importance. Of continuing to flip to EV. And again, I certainly hope that the police department, you know, in contrast, perhaps one of my colleagues, I certainly hope that the police department. Um, you know, will continue to do this, the fleet will continue to do this. I'm not trying to discourage that, but I am trying to discourage us to actually think of whether we really need. This many vehicles and whether we need to replace them as often. That's my question. That's all.
Further discussion on this item? So all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, opposed? Six, seven, eight, nine, uh, no, six, seven, eight, nine, sorry. Nine in fa- nine opposed. Six in favor, so that one does not pass. And you have another motion?
Do last one, I threw this one quickly. Um, so this is uh, line one forty nine, um, Operations and Public Works. This is under the Parks Department. Taylor Farm. Um, my, it's currently at a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. My proposal is to reduce it by a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, so to zero out that item.
And what is the item again?
This is the Taylor Farm. Um, uh, I believe it's to run water and the parking lot. And again, I take no position on the value of this. Long term, but even how many major projects Parks has on right now, this seemed like a place where we could probably delay for a year. Um, without significantly diminishing, from my perspective.
We have Mister Stowers on the line here, if anybody wants to ask him questions about the impact of this item.
Explain it a little bit.
Uh, okay.
No, no, that's exactly, if you could explain a little bit what he thinks or what he expects.
Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Yeah, this is a a improvement to extend the parking at at the Taylor Farms Dog Park. Um, we've had many complaints, uh, and a lot of attention, a lot of tension, uh, customers. And and people parking uh, on the beach versus uh, uh, loading up cars in the, in the dog park. Our uh, dog constituency, the population is growing. We've done nothing uh, over the last few years to really do anything. For that constituency in terms of their, the, the, the dog park. We also uh, cut a fifty thousand out of here for potable water. Which dogs really do need to be drinking potable water, not dirty and unclean and unsafe water. We cut that out because we have now a, a constituency organization, a Norwalk, Norwalk. Uh, um, Citizens for Dogs that um, is promising and and working with us to maybe raise the money for. Potable water. But we need parking and we need this parking with double the uh, amount of parking spaces. Right now, there's eighteen to twenty. We would double it to forty. Um, it's, it's, you know, it's one thing to say what's more important. And I don't, I I don't have any doubt that that, you know, fire stations and environment police are very, very important. Uh, but on the other hand, we have to also look at our other audiences and, you know, we, we, we are here to. Um, to develop a recreational environment for our constituencies, our residents. And um, our dog, we've got to do something as our dog population is growing. And um, we've got to uh, pay attention to that. And so. Um, that is what it's for and I'd be willing to take any questions.
Is that a um, recommendation in the master parks plan?
Yes, it is.
Any further comment or discussion, Mr. Stowers' questions? Mister Lopez.
Mister Stowers, could you provide me with something persuasive? Uh, do you think this is an absolute necessary? Could this be postponed for an additional year?
When we receive complaints, uh, al- almost on a daily basis. And two or three times uh, on a daily basis in the summer and the spring. Um, and we, there's tension among residents. I don't want any, anything to break out or pop off out there with our residents. So we have to pay attention to that. And that's what we're doing here. And we've been, uh, this has been talked about for several years. And uh. Uh, this is where, where there's a tension, where there's, where there's tension, we want to uh, solve those problems and. And we don't want anything to break out. So we, we want to extend the parking, relieve the tension and have our customers, which is. The, the, the dog population is growing and they're asking us to do more things for them. So this is just uh, uh. Some of the things that they have asked us to do.
Thank you.
Mister McMur.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick comment. This is obviously in District C and so I do hear about this a lot, but I just want to point out that. Although Taylor Farm is very large, um, there is parking not only um, on the far side of the area by the beach. But there is also resident permit parking at Marvin, which I see a lot of dog walkers utilizing. Um, so I just want to clarify that that is available.
And that, that, that is true, there is parking, but, but in the spring and the summer, the beaches are crowded. And so there's not enough parking. Uh, you know, there's not sufficient parking um, in in those times. Um, so that's why we're trying to provide more.
Think Mister Hughes is also on?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a really quick point. So other than uh, the request for pickleball courts, this is the second highest request we have coming into the Parks Department. And also um, in relation to uh, Miss uh, Councilwoman McMur's comment, uh, while there is parking over at Marvin School. I consistently get complaints from the school because they don't want to have dogs on the school property. So we do try to dissuade. Uh, dog use, uh, dog park users from parking at Marvin and then walking across the Marvin lot into Taylor Farm. So we do try to dissuade dog users, dog park users from parking at Marvin and then walking across the Marvin lot into Taylor Farm.
Hey, further comment or discussion? Seeing none or in favor of this motion?
I think you go on.
Sorry, oh.
Go on.
Oh, go ahead, Dawn. I'm sorry, just your hand.
So would this parking lot be built? Where would this parking lot be built?
Right now, there, right now, there's a parking, there's, there's a small parking lot that serves about eighteen to twenty cars. It would be extended and doubled so that we can relieve the tension. It's in the same area.
Taking over some of the, the grass space?
In, in, in Taylor Farms, yes. Not much. As, as she stated, Taylor Farms is large. So it can, it can stand the extension.
Any further, Mr. McMurphy?
Sorry, Mayor. Just one last question. What, how many more spaces are we looking at adding?
It, it'll, it'll double the space. There's, there's eighteen and twenty now. We can double it. It'll be forty spaces.
Any further comment or discussion?
So my question would be, and we can fund that with the one sixty-five, not the two fifteen, or we just have to find?
No, we can fund that with the one sixty-five. The other fifty thousand dollars that we cut out, that was originally requested was for the potable to be, to be linked in so that the, the dogs would have water to drink and, you know, provide for a more healthy environment for them.
Thank you.
So this. Hello?
I know you can't.
Yes, Mr. Wiggins.
Sorry about that. Thank you, man. Last thought. So the hundred and sixty-five thousand will only get us twenty more spaces?
Yes.
And we, we wouldn't be able to get more with that hundred and sixty-five thousand at all?
Well, we're gonna, we always, we always look to, to with our engineers and to stretch things, but, but that's what we estimate. Of course, we'll do, we'll do as much as we can.
So, Mr. Juszczyk, if I.
Yeah, do we reread my?
You're, you're taking and reducing that amount to one sixty-five, which will allow them to park this, the built parking space?
No, I'm reducing that amount to zero. So it's, it's a reduction.
Could you read it again?
Sure, yes. So line item one forty-nine, operations and public works, Taylor Farm. My motion is to reduce that line item by a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So zero it out.
Okay, the motion's been made and on the floor. All in favor of reducing that line item by a hundred and sixty-five thousand? Six, seven, opposed? So that fails eight to seven. So if we can recap, and then unless there's any further discussion, we can vote on the capital budget as amended. So, Mr. Juszczyk, could you read items one, three? One and three are the only two that passed, I believe, right? Yes.
That's correct.
Yes. So item one and item three, and that will give us a, a new total.
Okay, so I am now, I am now moving that we pass the capital budget as amended, which is the budget as presented with the reduction of line eight for ADA compliance by twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And then.
Item three.
Three.
Economic and community development, zero that line item out.
Correct. So for line forty-two, Economic Community Development Arts and Public Places Program, that line item has gone to zero.
From one fifty.
From one fifty.
So there's a reduction in the proposed capital budget of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Am I correct?
Correct. Yep.
And therefore, therefore, the motion is to, and therefore, the motion is to approve capital budget of.
And therefore, why? Okay, hang on two seconds. Nope, I've got it on a spreadsheet. I can do it. I got it on a spreadsheet.
But also, there's also, just so the council members know, if you reduce, you can move some of that money into another capital item if anybody is so inclined. That's, that's your choice as well. That's what's has done, and that's been done in the past where somebody would take fifty thousand dollars out of this line item and move it over to another line item because they feel they need something more. So the, the council can do that. But I just wanted to, now, if Mrs. Juszczyk Eichner could give us the total.
Sure.
Capital budget.
Just for point of clarification, Mayor, if, if, you have the, they have the right to do that, but it has to be for an item that's within the capital, capital budget.
Right.
Just want to clarify.
Right.
Yes, as much as good. Yes. So the, so leading, leading to a total capital budget of forty-five million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
And that's as amended. So.
That is as amended.
If, if there's no further discussion on that.
Mr. Wiggins has his hand up.
Pardon me?
Mr. Wiggins.
Mr. Wiggins.
So it is, can we still table this item? But since we, we, we have this extra money and we can move it to other places, can we still have a motion to table this item?
Anybody can make a motion to table at any time, but remember that if we table it, we have to have a special meeting by April fifteenth. Which is Monday, this coming Monday.
Yeah, I think it's still appropriate to, to table this item.
You're making a motion to table the item, is that right?
Yeah, the entire capital budget.
The entire budget or just what we talked about?
Well, no, I'm, I'm sorry, Greg. You're right. The entire budget.
We would be making a motion to table the vote, which has just been proposed by Councilman Juszczyk.
Okay, so let Ms. Juszczyk Eichner finish her total and then, so the total of capital budget would then be four hundred, I mean, yeah, four hundred and.
Forty-five million.
Forty-five million.
One hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
So now, is there any other discussion? Now, Mr.?
On readiness, Mr. Mayor. For clarity, we're reducing the capital budget. And I thought the intent was to reallocate that reduction and move that amount for another line item specifically to support defined upon. Is that not correct?
No, that's not correct.
So we're just, we're just making these reductions to reduce the capital budget, period.
Right.
But not, as you just stated, we have the ability to move that dollar to an existing line item.
Only an existing line.
But that's not the intent of what's happening here.
No, you can.
I'm saying, are we voting to do that?
No, my motion is not.
Yeah, the vote right now is to reduce the capital budget by one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Period.
Period. As I mentioned earlier, that if you wish to reallocate that money to an existing line item already in the capital budget, you can do that.
And that should be part of this vote.
You'd have to know. Ms. Juszczyk Eichner would, is, is making a motion to reduce it. And then at that time, we open it up for discussion and you can make a motion or do whatever you want as well. And then Mr. Wiggins, it appears, is looking to table the item completely.
If, if I may, just, just as.
Uh, uh, yeah.
Confirm as a matter of process. There already has been a, a vote to reduce two line items by a total of one seventy-five. That's been approved. So if, if there is going to be a desire to reallocate that one seventy-five to other items within the budget, there'd have to be, but a motion at this time to do that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, if the motion would be to approve the capital budget as, as amended, which is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I just want to make sure we get one thing correct, because the last thing we all want to do is come back on Monday, because, because we got our math wrong. I'm trusting your math is right. But I see, I think our CFO was on, could somebody from the finance office just verify that if you reduce the capital budget by a hundred and seventy-five thousand, the appropriate number to approve is forty, is forty-five million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty?
Yeah, Mario, this is Tom. Let me, just give me five seconds.
Figure time. Just want to make sure that we get it right, so we don't have to come back on Monday for.
We need a bathroom.
Yeah.
I'm using Tom's spreadsheet, so it should be correct.
I, I, yeah. I've got forty-five, one ninety-two, two eighty as well.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure.
Right, where were we?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I just need to make sure that we're. I'm asking a point of procedure. I understood the advice of the Corporation Council. So we are now voting on the amendments as have been.
The motion on the floor would be to vote on the amended capital budget reduced by an amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Reduction, and then determining whatever, if the vote is up or down by Councilman Wiggins, then we can then vote to move the money somewhere. It's a three.
No.
No, once, once you vote on this, they reduce it by a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that money's gone. You can't put it in any place else.
So it has to be a part of the current.
Right. So I, I think, I, I think if people want to reallocate that one seventy-five, I should withdraw my motion, because my motion is for the final vote on the total budget. So if there is, if people do want to move to reallocate, then I should withdraw my motion, I think.
But we've already voted on.
Right. So there's that hundred and seventy-five, those changes have been made. So if you want to reallocate, it would have to be by motion now.
And, and can I, can I, is it a point of personal privilege?
I'm sorry?
I think I'm trying to make a point of personal privilege. It's all bonk, bonk, but what's up here right now? Can we just have a few minutes for us to talk to see if we want to reallocate it before we let her go? I don't think you need to.
You could, you could take a five minute, you could take a five minute. I don't want you to kick.
Well, right now, we haven't voted on the amended capital budget. You've heard the reduction of a hundred and seventy-five thousand out of those two items.
And I get that.
You want to take any of that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and reallocate it to another line item already in the capital budget? You can't, you can't introduce new items into the budget.
I understand. I just.
Yep.
Just so that everyone has an opportunity, we just briefly, not long, have people, give people the opportunity to see if they want to move it before it goes, before she removes her. That's my question.
How about this? I will, I withdraw my motion, and instead I would like to move for a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Move for a five-minute recess, all in favor? Oppose? We will be back here in nine fifty-seven. It's ten oh one, and we are back in session. Somebody want to remind me where we are? We have a motion on the floor that has been passed to reduce the capital budget by one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That motion has been made. Those, those, those things have been voted on. Now there's a, a motion on the floor. Or there needs to be a motion on the floor to.
I'll take, I'll motion the table.
You've got a.
I'm sorry?
I had a, I said a motion to table the whole.
Well, we, we, we've got to get to this part first, and then if you want to make a motion to table, we'll vote on it.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion is to reduce the capital budget by one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to a total of forty-five million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty.
I, sorry, Mayor, I apologize. But I think I withdrew that motion because the question was, did anyone want to make a motion to reallocate the hundred and seventy-five thousand? Which would be the option right now.
Yeah, and what, if we put that motion on the floor, then the, the money is there. Anybody can then add, you know, ask for comments on it, and somebody can say, well, I'd like to take whatever.
Right, but I, but I.
Okay, you want to withdraw that motion?
I withdraw that motion.
That motion is withdrawn.
Now, it's on the table. We've, we've.
We have a budget on the table of forty-five million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wiggins?
Withrew, we withdrew the motion to vote on.
That's all right, Mr. Wiggins?
Yeah, I just want to make a motion to, to table this item, to table the, the. But I, I thought I did that already. I thought that was supposed to get done first. I'm sorry.
If I can make a suggestion for the motion to table, I, I think, I see there's one hand up, just from a procedural standpoint. Someone made the suggestion of figuring out if anybody wants to make a motion to reallocate the one seventy-five. And, Mayor, if you want to ask that question, and in fifteen seconds, if nobody makes a motion, then I would proceed with the motion that was just withdrawn, repeating that. And then Councilman Wiggins could make a motion to table. That's not debatable. Take a vote on that. If, if it's passed, then you're going to have a special meeting on Monday night, fifteenth. If it's not passed, then you go forward with voting on the motion. So Mayor, if you agree with that, would you like to ask if anybody would like to make a motion to reallocate the one seventy-five?
Is anybody looking to make a motion to allocate part of the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? Ms. Murray?
I would like to reallocate one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to line seven under the fire department. So this will make the line item two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
What, what, what is the issue? The item?
Line item seven for the fire department.
Okay.
So this will make the item two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And what is the, what is the person?
Heather, you've got it. It's building.
Buildings. It's building repairs at various stations.
It's building, building repairs at various stations.
Um, could you, so?
Number seven.
What is the topic that you said, building and repairs?
Building repairs at various stations. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right, Mayor. So.
Okay.
Line item seven.
So Ms. Murray is making a motion to reallocate the entire one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to line item seven on the fire department, building repairs, various stations, to a total now of what?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Any discussion on that?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr.
Can you provide the detail as to what the current request is?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, so that would make it two twenty-five.
So the regional request from the fire department is for fifty thousand, right?
Yes.
So apparently there was, that's what they, the fire department had qualified their request for.
Yes.
So do we know what they're going to do with this additional one seventy-five?
Well, generally, they put fifty thousand dollars a year, and they have repairs and so forth that they make. Something breaks, they're, you know.
Different maintenance. Different maintenance.
Ms. Murray?
I would like to say, so there is in the plans for doing upgrades to the building, there's various stages like the HVAC. And many of us saw that obviously the, the air was definitely, you know, quality of life issue. So this isn't going to do all of it, but it certainly makes the, a quality of life issue if they choose to use it for that. But I suspect that they will. I think if you were in the building, that that would be obvious. The other obvious thing that they had a flooring issue. So I suspect it would go to one or the other. It doesn't solve the big problem, but it solves our immediate concern.
So that item was on the table, Mr. Lopez?
Um, quick question, council member. So was the concern was to reallocate some funds to the fire station and not so much the concern about the taxpayer and all these sorts of discussions we've been having?
Well, I, I don't think we've added a burden to the taxpayer. We reallocated. And so we, we obviously are very concerned for the taxpayer. But my concern for the taxpayer is also that we have firefighters that can go out and fight a fire breathing full air. And we weren't able to go to the three million. So I think we, we certainly are concerned about that. We sat here looking at how we can cut line items, which is, I would bet, pretty unusual. I mean, the mayor has been here ten years. You probably could speak better to that. But I think we've worked really, really hard to be concerned about the taxpayer, and this is a minimal amount. And District C and D, where Station Four is, is the largest area in the city by the station house, and it desperately needs work and support. So I am definitely thinking about the taxpayer.
Perfect. Thanks.
Any further discussion on that item? Mr. Wiggins?
Yeah, I think, once again, I think that's why it's important to table it, because I don't want, to Greg's point, we, we're, we don't, we don't know where, if we was to put that in their budget, we don't know a hundred percent where that money is going. I think it's really appropriate to, to really reevaluate what we're doing, because it, my thoughts and the reason why, you know, I was thinking about going against is because of the taxpayers, not because of, to reallocate. So that's my thoughts on it, but I, I definitely think we should, we should come back to this.
Further comment or discussion?
Just, just to clarify, anything that they decide to do, we will have to vote on, because it's over a certain amount, Dawn, right? You, you will have a chance to determine whether they're using it appropriately when they go to use it, I think.
And then, but also, just to be clear, this is a, a motion to reallocate a hundred and seventy-five thousand to that specific line item.
Right.
It can only be, it'll only be used to increase, it will, it will increase that line item. It cannot, it will not change any of the other items.
It'll be the original amount of the capital budget as proposed. So all in favor of reallocating the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to line item seven for the fire department, building repairs, various stations. All in favor? Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, it looks like, all opposed. One. Two, uh, no, Dewan, you're opposed, uh, Mr. Burnett, who abstains? So it's two opposed. Twelve in favor, and so that money was been reallocated.
So now, my suggestion is that the motion that was previously withdrawn. Be, uh, made again, and then Councilman Wiggins, like, he has the, he has the opportunity to, to, uh, go forward with the motion to table. So I would have the motion go forward first, and then the motion to table.
But at this point, I am now moving to have a vote on the capital budget as amended. For the, um, total allocation of. Forty-five million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Which is the same amount as was recommended by the BET to the council.
Correct. So we have that on there. Now that motion is made. Um, now is the, the appropriate time for Mr. Wiggins to make his motion to table, because if you vote on it.
Yes, he likes to ask for discussion.
Are you going to, uh, no, you don't, ask for discussion on the table?
No, so you ask for discussion, then Councilman Wiggins makes his mo- make his motion.
Is there any discussion on, well, no, we can't make the motion, well, yeah. Mr. Wiggins, are you gonna ma- make a motion to table?
Yeah, I think it's still appropriate to, um, make a motion to table, so I am gonna make a motion to table this.
Okay, well, we don't, we can't discuss it, you, you already make the motion, there's, motion to table is not debatable. So all.
I think that's what Mario was saying, right? He was saying the discussion first and then a motion, but.
After we vote, if we vote to table, there's no further discussion on this item tonight. If it passes, if it doesn't pass, then we have further discussion.
That is correct, under the rules of the council.
So, Mr. Wiggins made a motion to table the capital budget approval. All in favor? Okay, all opposed. Abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, that, you abstain?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was, uh, one, two, three in favor, one abstention. And eleven opposed, so that motion to table fails. Now, we put a motion on the floor to approve the capital budget. As amended in the total amount of.
Uh, forty-five million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
There any further discussion? Mrs. Dunn?
I'd like to request a roll call vote, please.
Could, could, can say something before that?
Yes.
I'd like to say something before we do.
Sure.
While I understand that, you know, we all say this is the democratic way, this process was just as wrong. As everything else we've been, we sat here for ten, fifteen minutes to go outside and pick something. To make a statement, right? So what is that statement that we're making? We took a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is how much in debt service, maybe eight hundred bucks or so. Right? So it's about a statement that we, that we're making, and, 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 and really, the process is flawed. And we continue that with what we just did here, in my opinion. Um, so I think we got to rethink that. We could, we could, we could make a statement in a lot of ways. And it didn't necessarily have to boil down to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars going to the fire department. It didn't have to boil down to us taking money away from certain, these are a lot of things that we could have taken. And there are a lot of things we could have sent and put money into, so we quickly made this decision. So we're no better than what has been happening and transpiring so far through this process. I will be voting, but that is.
Further discussion with Lopez?
No, I want to read a, with, with, uh, Councilwoman Dung just said, was that, like, I'm honestly very disappointed. In the way this was undertaken. I mean, this is completely unprofessional. I mean, it's, yes, there, there, I, I expressed my concerns about the entire budgetary process from the very beginning. But to bring up these line items at the very last minute, kind of just, it's, 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 it's kind of repeating the same, the same concerns that I had. I am in favor of this, but again, want to make it very clear, this is not the way to conduct business. Maybe it is historically, but, you know, I'm very surprised. But then again, hopefully we'll have these discussions going forward, um, and there will be some changes that will take place. Um, I'm gonna do my best to make sure they actually occur, um, in all realms, but, you know, just wanted to kind of just close off with some of those remarks.
Further discussion? Mr. Wiggins?
Yeah, I, I, I'm a hundred percent in agreeance with, um, Councilman Johan and, uh, Ms. Young. We, I think we just wasted our time on this call. It was seven, we, we got on this call at seven thirty, so almost, um, ten thirty, and. I feel like nothing got accomplished. We, we had a, a per- perfect opportunity to go back to the table, um. What, five days, however long, on Monday to go back to the table and talk about this. And we decided to just rush, you know, something that, what we have fi- a fi- in a five-minute break span. We don't even know if that's gonna even, um, make a, a huge impact. At the, uh, the fire department, and I think we, we, we missed the opportunity. And I don't know if I can, if I have the right to make that motion again, but I think it's really appropriate for us to come back. Is it because of, we're too tired and we don't want to meet? I think is, 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 is not appropriate to really go forward with this.
So any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the cap, I'm sorry? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you're right, okay. This, uh, Dixon, would you call a roll on this? All in favor of approving the capital budget as amended?
Mr. Burnett?
Yeah.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Jilsky-Eigner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Seed?
No.
Mr. Wiggins?
No.
Ms. Young?
No.
Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
No.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Frere?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Eleven, um, eleven, two. The motion passed.
Okay, the vote was eleven to four, the motion passes. Now the next item on our agenda. Next item is, uh, a, it's under, um. Uh, item E under Finance, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I know the hour is wrong, so. We, uh. Uh, this is still a, a very important item, uh, there's no, uh, and the item is a presentation of the BET approved operating budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. There's no actual vote that needs to be taken now, and the reason for that is that the, the, uh, the council had approved. The operating budget cap at four hundred and forty million dollars, and the BEC, BET. Uh, approved an operating budget, um, under that amount, at four hundred and thirty-five million. So therefore, there's no need for a vote to increase the cap, because they came in under the cap. Uh, what, what we, we, uh, requested of the fi- the Finance Department. Is to just take some time tonight to go through a presentation. To what, to cover a, a couple of items, because this is a very unique year. We all know the impact of the revow, and, and, and all of the presentations and the information that we've received. And the BET, um, their recommendation is to go forward with the four in phase. Of the, um, the impact of the revow and what the taxes look like as a result of that. So we've asked the Finance Department, uh, Tom Ellis. Uh, to provide a, uh, presentation to just walk us through where we're at today and what the road ahead looks like. As it relates to this phase and approach, what the impact will be to the taxing districts. And, and also in that, um, presentation to touch on. The upcoming operating budget whereby the city will be receiving two point three-nine percent increase. And the Board of Ed will be receiving a three percent increase. Um, again, this is a very unique year, and, uh, we, we felt it was necessary. Uh, to ensure everyone understands the, the various mechanics involved going forward. As it relates to this phase and approach over the next four years. And so with that, I will ask Tom to go live and, um, and, uh, share the information from the Finance Department.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Tom Ellis, I think I've been, uh, in front of you folks. A couple times, uh, in the last few months, and, uh, here we are again with another update on the operating budget. Tonight I have our new CFO, uh, Jared Schmidt with us, um. And also, uh, our tax assessor, Paul Gorman, since that was such, uh, a topic during this whole process. Um, without any further ado, I'll share my screen and we'll, we'll go through, uh. The presentation, it's nine slides, some of which you've already seen, but just a, a bit of a refresher, and then, uh, take you through the thought process and where we ended up. In terms of the revaluation. All right, can everybody see that and clearly? All right.
Might want to enlarge it if you can.
Can you possibly show it in screen?
I've got it fully, uh, I've got it fully, uh, blown up on. Yeah, slideshow, and then.
Put it in presentation mode, the slides on the left are showing.
Yeah, no, uh, I don't see a presentation mode, Larry.
From beginning.
Okay, got it now?
No.
Go to slideshow, Tom.
Yeah.
Go to slideshow and then go to current slide.
Nothing's changed, can you just s- select the icon for slideshow?
Yeah, I am.
I don't think it works after ten o'clock.
I've tried both, uh, from beginning and custom, uh, from beginning, doesn't work.
Just go to current slide.
Uh, it's something, something's coming up.
You can see it.
All right. Okay, um, we'll just have to gut through it here, um, so. This is a reminder on the, on the calendar, the process that we've been through, um, most of the steps, uh, along the way. We are right here, we're on April ninth, and the common council sets the final budget cap as, um, Greg mentioned. We are not actually voting, this is just an update, since it did not, the BET did not recommend increasing the cap. So, this is, uh, this, again, this is where we are right now, so this is, uh, you know, the, the approval from fiscal twenty-four. That's our comparative, so everything that we, we talk about with the percentages is against the original approved, not the revised budget. So that's, uh, this column here, this is the original recommend- recommendation, uh, back on February twenty-second. And we have been, uh, making adjustments along the way, reducing expenses, increasing revenues wherever we can. Uh, the revised recommended came down slightly from four forty-two to four hundred and forty million. Uh, and that's how we ended up with the four percent for the Board of Ed, uh, four percent for the city, and an overall of four percent. So off to the BET it went, further adjustments along the way, um. Got it down to, uh, where they recommended rather thir- three percent for the Board of Education. A reduction of about two million dollars from the previous recommendation, and then on the city side. Uh, brought it down to two point three-nine percent here, uh, or roughly three million dollar, uh, reduction. From the revised twenty-five recommended. So that's where we are right now, two point three-nine on the city side, three for Bo- Board of Ed, overall blended rate of two point seven-two percent. Um, and this is just, uh, to highlight, you probably saw this, uh, this slide before, but this is to highlight the impact. Of the revaluation, um, and Paul Gorman, if you're on, if you want to take this one, just sort of walk, uh. Walk everybody through the, the summary high-level view of, uh, what the impact of the, the first physical revaluation in ten years. Uh, came out to be.
Sure, good evening, everybody. Um, so, I mean, the bullet points pretty much summarize exactly what went on over the course of the past year and a half. Uh, it's been five years since we did a revaluation in twenty eighteen, it was what you could call a statistical. Revaluation where it wasn't a boots-on-the-ground, knock on the doors, get information kind of revow. Um, this was that type of revow, and it was being done at a time where. The marketplace had exploded over the past four years. Uh, partially due to COVID, but then just the market continued to escalate, and quite frankly, if we were to revow again today. The values would be even higher, the, the values have continued to, uh, increase, um, as we, as I've been tracking them. So we went from, as it says, we went from a fifteen billion dollar grand list to an eighteen billion dollar grand list, and. The majority of that increase was due to the residential increases, which was at a clip of about thirty-five percent per home on average. And we experienced a severe, uh, shift in our, uh, valuation. Last year, we were at sixty-six percent of it being residential and thirty-four percent being commercial and. And all the other types, and this year it, uh, panned out to seventy-one and a half to twenty-eight and a half. Which is a pretty major shift for, uh, at a time at the revow and with the fact that the commercial. Was going flat or losing value. Um, and as Tom highlighted at the bottom, and it's been talked about for about a month, um, the, the only sector. That truly performed really well was apartments. They saw appreciation, and we saw appreciation from them. Not only in their value, but in the apartment buildings being completed and gaining, um. Uh, value just from their construction being completed. We also did see one major e- enterprise zone property continue to increase in value in the city. Because one twenty-three Water Street, um, is now in its third year, so it's only receiving a fifty percent abatement. As opposed to the hundred percent abatement that it had been receiving in the past. And that's pretty much where we're at.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll just pause here and, uh, give people a chance to ask any questions before we move on to more of the, uh, the numerical data.
Anybody have any questions this, thus far? Nope, I think we're good.
Okay. So this next slide is, is, uh, highlighting what would have happened if we were, if we had a flat budget. Um, and, and this is to emphasize the, how, the impact, uh, the revaluation would have had to the average taxable taxpayer. Um, so it would show, it would have shown, again, this is zero percent in the city, zero percent on the Board of Ed, nothing, no drawdown from the rainy day fund. Um, so you could see that, uh, the mill rates last year compared to this year. Would have come down across the board in all six districts, um. An average of, uh, but let's call it twenty percent across the board, uh, and then the, what that would have translated to in the median tax bills. Um, is, is roughly, uh, you know, I would say, yeah, let's call it the fifteen to twenty percent, a high of twenty-eight percent. And a low of three point one-one percent, um, and these are the dollar amounts that it would have been. Again, this is a zero percent budget. So knowing that that was not achievable, um. I just wanted to kind of show everybody just, just how much the, the cost of the revow would have been to, uh, to each, each taxpayer. This, this, uh, page here is comparing, I'm sorry, comparing, um, the different scenarios that we ended up with. So this first one is, is the same thing as what we just saw, zero percent, zero percent. Um, city and, and Board of Ed and nothing from the rainy day fund. This four percent is, was what our original recommendation. This four percent is was what our original recommendation was, again, four percent city, four percent Board of Ed. Eight million from the rainy day fund. Uh, putting per raising per personal property to twenty seven mills. And upping the motor vehicle mill rate to thirty two point four six uh, which is, which is actually what the state maximum is. So. Um, and again, this is, this is no phase in, so this is, this is the one that was really uh, dramatic. So some pretty significant tax increases across the board, anywhere from a thousand to almost. Uh, thirty seven hundred dollars and percentage wise even even more uh, alarming, so uh, yeah, ten percent to. Thirty seven percent, so these numbers right here, uh, that was if we did nothing with the four percent original recommended. So where did we end up with the final recommendation? Uh, again, three percent, two point three nine percent, eight million, eight million dollar draw. We took the personal property up one more mill rate from the original recommendations. And the motor vehicle rate stayed at the state limit. Um, and this, so this is what it looked like. Uh, again, this is with a four-year phase in, this one up here, no phase in. The bottom one uh, is is with one year phase, and this is what our recommendation is at this point. Um, so you can see that the average increase is is much or significantly less. Than would have been without the phase in, so going from one point six percent. In the fifth district to uh, nine percent in the second district and and. Here are the average tax increases, none of them over a thousand dollars uh, year over year. Any questions here?
Sure, Lopez. Ladies first thing, somebody.
Yeah, so Tom, just because I I've heard some questions about this and I think some potential confusion in the public. Can you just briefly explain? Are the numbers higher for the first, second passing taxing districts, the increase is larger in part because? And for that matter, I guess the third and sixth, because the home values have increased more in those districts? Not that they're necessarily absolutely higher, but they have seen larger increases? Uh, or is there some other reason that those percentages are higher for those districts?
Um, Paul, you're still on? I think you you might be able to, I don't know if you have at the at your fingertips. District specific uh, percentages.
No, I I do not have district specific percentages. I mean, we have the median value changes. Um, on your screen there. I'm just having trouble seeing them because I'm on, I'm on a phone. Um. So, I mean, I could, I could try to drill into it and get some information to people, but that's not something I have available.
But never mind, it's actually on the previous slide, uh, that that uh, slide four that I showed. Uh, medium home value, uh, yeah, first district. Is uh, the second highest, that's fifty four percent, the second district was sixty one percent. Nobody, no other districts were over fifty percent, so I'm sorry, I didn't catch who answered that question, but to answer the question, yes. The median home value went up the highest in those two districts.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Mr. Lopez?
No, thank you, Mayor, he actually, his rescue entered up.
Any further discussion at this point or questions? Okay, uh, the stunt.
I have a question. So this is just for next year, and then what does two thousand and six look like? If it's a four-year phase in?
Uh, that will be one of the upcoming.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was there anything else on that one?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, go, I gotta shrink this one down just to fit just a little bit. Um. So here, here's what the totals look like, uh, and again, they they'll they'll be more detail on the next slide, but this is what the four-year uh, phase in. Looks like um, at the top, that's the total of the four years versus the four-year total of no phase in. So you can see that uh, there's every, every tax district saved with the with the phase in. Um, the average of those of the six task tax districts comes out to two thousand and fifteen dollars, so. Um, he, that's uh, you know, a decent, a decent reduction over the course of the next four years. Um, but we, you know, when we did the phase in, we had to make some assumptions on the operating budget, so. Uh, obviously, these are subject to change. It was the best we could do uh, at at the time and what we think will happen. Um, so we we assume three percent growth for the city and the Board of Education. For each of the four years, an eight million dollar drawdown of the rainy day fund each year. And then keeping the the personal property at twenty eight, like it was in in the first year, and motor vehicle also at the state limit of thirty two point four six seven.
And Tom, Tom, these numbers are likely to change when some of the other new construction comes online and are added to our values?
Uh, yes, uh, so that's uh, you know, at the at the end of the ta- uh, presentation, there are a few closing remarks, and one of those is indeed. Uh, it gives the opportunity for uh, more. Uh, more of a potential shift to the commercial side rather than the residential side as as more apartments and more construction comes online.
We can go on.
Okay. And then here is the four-year phase, and I'm gonna blow this up a little bit. I know there's a lot of data here. Can you still see the whole screen? Okay, so yeah, so what we were, this this is the the four-year phase in year one, that's this, the, this is the section that we just saw. And here's what it looks like, year two, year three, and year four, all the way down at the bottom. Again, this is, this is with those three percent assumptions and eight million dollar rainy day drawdown each year. Anything on this one? And I can, I can send this presentation out to everybody uh, after the meeting to.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, everybody can then have the time to go through things and put together any questions that they have.
And then just the the conclusion here on on this. So it's a significant uh, overall increase to the median tax bills uh, due to the revaluation, as we said, uh, property value is going up. Uh, significantly on the residential side in tandem with the shift uh, from resident, I'm sorry, from commercial to residential. Um, during this whole process, we. We probably ran close to a hundred different scenarios with different, different revenue projections, different mill rates, different uh, operating budget limits. Um, trying to come up with any, or trying to come up with the best option uh, in in terms of reducing the tax burden. Um, so we did look at two and three years, we ended up settling on the four-year option. Uh, you know, with the BET uh, deliberating last, last Monday. To uh, to actually uh, finalize all this, so. Um, what it, what did they, you know, what did they come to conclude with was? Uh, reduces the annual impact and and creates a less impactful ti- tax increase for the taxpayers. Uh, material savings, as I said, an average savings of two thousand fifteen dollars versus a no-phase scenario. And uh, and as we were just discussing, allows for the potential rebound uh, on the commercial side, which could uh. Lessen the the residential burden uh, going forward.
Okay, uh, Ms. Smith?
Um, yeah, Tom, can you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yeah. Need it blown up?
Um, I can do it. Um, so I I'm noticing that um, in year two of the phase in. There's a pretty significant jump in the uh, tax bill. And then it goes down again in um, year three. And four, so what is the reason for the jump in year two?
Uh. Well, sure, we uh, we had all the same, you know, it all assumes three percent on on every item. Um, all I can think of is that we did make some revenue assumptions for year one. Uh, there are some one-time settlements, um, and Mario can can talk to this better if uh, if need be, but. Um, there are a few settlements out there that we agreed is uh, are are very, very likely to occur in two thousand five, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty five. Uh, but will not, you know, we didn't make any uh, any further assumptions on the revenue stream going forward, it's just, it's just too difficult to predict. Uh, and the other thing um, that we pushed out to twenty twenty five is uh, the tax collector is having a tax sale. Originally, that was going to be in July, um, but we we agreed to push that out to September to take the majority of the revenue in the next fiscal year. Normally, what happens during the tax sale, um, by the time it actually happens, there aren't that many properties that actually get sold. Uh, but what it does, it acts as a catalyst for uh, delinquent taxpayers to to, you know, get up to speed. And make their, you know, get their tax bills current, so. Um, even though it's scheduled for September, at least is already starting to see some, some increase uh, coming in on delinquent taxes. But we expect the majority of that will be in July and August and in September, right up to the day of the tax sales, so that people don't. Uh, end up on that list. So again, we didn't plan for any of those, uh, either that, uh, we we considered that a one-off scenario. Um, and then the the tax, uh, the, I'm sorry, the, the legal settlements that will bring in. Somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six million between, between all of them, uh, we are not projecting that those will happen on a regular basis. Just, it's just too difficult to predict.
Okay, thank you.
One of those with the Housing Authority, we have three point three million coming in from them.
Yeah, it was three point three there, around there, and then. Um, yeah, there's a few projects where we know the money is coming in the next fiscal year, the mayor's always been fairly conservative and. Not wanting to assume something unless we have fairly good idea that it's gonna happen. Some of those things could happen in the second year to reduce it, so it's possible that it'll be a much better scenario in the year two, they just don't want to. Project that now, just to be conservative.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think it's important to just emphasize, and I know it was on one of the slides, that. What we're seeing in front of us is is based upon some major assumptions that. The Board of Ed would get a three percent increase, the city would have a three percent increase, any shift in those numbers will. Obviously have a shift in these numbers.
Right.
So just want to keep that in mind that people don't walk away and say, okay, these are set numbers, so let me start budgeting. Uh, you know, for next year, whatever amount you see here, these numbers can and and may very well change. Hopefully very slightly, but. Keep in mind of the, we had to make some assumptions to to, in order to project what the phase in would look like. But these are numbers are not baked in stone, they can change.
Any further comments or discussion? As we said, um, Mr. Ellis will send everyone a copy by email as soon as we adjourn, and then. Obviously, you'll have an opportunity to look at the numbers and drill down even uh, further. Uh, and certainly ask any questions that uh, that might arise as a result of that. Mr. Juleski Eigner?
Two seconds, literally. I'm just asking everyone to start engaging with the charter revision process if you are unhappy with the results. Um, and I look forward to talking to all of you this summer and and going forward about that. Thank you.
Any further, Mrs. Shannon?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned at ten forty two.